As the premier community in Hampton Roads, James City County strives to maintain a high quality of life for all citizens through sound fiscal management and legislative actions. In an ongoing effort to increase transparency, your Board of Supervisors holds public meetings to garner citizen input before making important decisions. Here is tonight's meeting agenda. Stay tuned. The Board of Supervisors meeting will begin shortly.
I call to order this regular meeting of the James City County Board of Supervisors. Mr. Stevens, you please call the roll.
Mr. Hippel?
Here.
Mr. Hippel represents the Powhatan District and is Vice Chair of the Board. Ms. Larson?
Here.
Ms. Larson represents the Berkeley District. Ms. Sadler?
Here.
Ms. Sadler represents the Stonehouse District. Mr. McGlinnan?
Here.
Mr. McGlinnan represents the Roberts District. Mr. Eisenhower?
Here.
Mr. Eisenhower represents the Jamestown District and is Chair of the Board. Sitting to my left is Adam Kinsman, County Attorney, and I'm Scott Stevens, County Administrator, and it is my pleasure to be clerk to the Board.
We will begin our meeting this evening, as we usually do, with a moment of silence followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Our Pledge of Allegiance is going to... Ah, here we have the last one arriving. Thank you.[145.12][145.12](Laughter). The Pledge of Allegiance tonight will be led by Bailey Hollenbeck, Alice Kaiser, Evelyn Ryek, Anna Loyacano, and Evan Boller. These young folks are honor roll students who were nominated by their Principal, Mr. Hurley, for working hard academically and setting up positive examples for others to emulate. So we'll be very pleased to have them lead us in the pledge after a moment of silence. All would come up. I will have some certificates for you, Alice. There you go. And Evelyn, Bailey, and Anna, and Evan. We didn't get one for you, but I'm gonna get it and mail it to you because they didn't have your name on list here. Everybody gets a county pen. And thank you so much for coming and starting off our meeting first. Everybody, stand there and get a picture.[230.12][230.12](Laughter). Okay. All right. We now will move to our presentations, and our first presentation this evening is our Chairman's Awards. And I'm going to get my notes and these things and come down to the other podium to do the presentations. First of all, I'd like to start off with a brief recap of what we have done this year on the Board. We've had a very busy and a very productive 2019. We had 27 total meetings, 12 regular, 10 work session, organizational meeting, retreat, budget work session, and two joint meetings with the school board. We've had events at these meetings where we have had seven retiree recognitions, 32 presentations, 25 grant awards totaling $2.8 million, 53 public hearings, and 45 work session topics. So we've been quite busy. I would like to thank my colleagues for the collaborative way in which we worked this year to get so much accomplished. Looking forward to next year, our focus for next year will be on comprehensive plan rewrite, which is a major effort for us. We want to continue pursuing revenue options through... Hopefully, we can get an impact fee authorized so we can help pay for some of the development. We're looking to diversify our economy beyond just tourism and retail, and to be able to do that, we have to work on two other things: workforce development, so we have the workforce for that diversification, and affordable housing, where they have places to live. Other challenges: a new elementary school is on the horizon, and we still are working to secure our long-term water supply at least cost. So that's our this year and projections for next year. I'd like to start with the... We have two presentations. We have one Chairman's Award for an organization or individual, and I will start out here and say that our Chairman's Award for 2019 is given to Habitat for Humanity Peninsula in Greater Williamsburg.[386.61][386.61](Applause). I had some notes, but the resolution actually says it all. I will just read that. Janet Green is the Executive Director. I'll have Janet come up. Please stand here while we read this for you. "Habitat for Humanity Peninsula in Greater Williamsburg. Whereas Habitat for Humanity Peninsula in Greater Williamsburg has been a constant presence in supporting affordable housing in James City County, and their history of building affordable homes dates back to 1998. And whereas they have constructed seven homes on Moses Lane, four in Forest Glen, 10 in Ironbound Square, four on McGruder Avenue, five in Forest Heights Neighbors Drive, with four additional homes in the planning stages. And whereas they have made significant contributions to countywide through their presence in the Colony Square Shopping Center storefront at the Restore..." Fantastic place if you haven't been there. "...and whereas the Executive Director, Janet Green, was an active participant on the Workforce Housing Task Force. And whereas they completed the first rehab blitz in the Forest Glen neighborhood in 2019 with repairs to 17 homes of low-income residents, they organized 160 volunteers to compete... complete an average of 10 to 15 different projects equating to over 1,200 volunteer hours." And I will break and say that our entire Board did participate on that, so I was very pleased with that.[476.84][476.84](Applause). Now therefore, be it resolved that the Chairman of the Board of Supervisors of James City County does hereby recognize Habitat for Humanity Peninsula in Greater Williamsburg and presents this award as a token of appreciation for their dedicated service to the county and the community, and with my name and the county's signature.[494.03][494.03](Applause).
Thank you so much. I'm sure you're all here because Habitat was getting this award.[512.31][512.31](Laughter). And you love the Restore is the other reason. Thank you. Thank the Board of Supervisors. We look forward to repairing and building new homes for our citizens next year. Thank you.
Thank you.[526.45][526.45](Applause). The next Chairman's Award actually goes to individuals or groups within the staff. And on this one, this year we faced a difficult decision on how to handle changes to our curbside recycling, which everyone is well aware of. We had... While we had an expected downturn in participation, our new contractor was not very effective in delivering and reclaiming recycling bins and keeping our customers fully informed about program changes. Fortunately, our superb curbside recycling implementation team, our staff, stepped in and shouldered the load. They've made a difficult transition much easier for our customers, and they deserve our sincere thanks and appreciation. They are the recipients of the 2019 Chairman's Award for Staff. And I will read this award, and then we have to pass out to all of our members of that team here. "Curbside Recycling Implementation Team. Whereas the Board of Supervisors directed staff to establish a new fee-based recycling program to begin October 1st, 2019, and whereas curbside recycling team consisting of various departments and designated working groups set forth to develop and implement the new fee-based program, the innovative team focused on providing James City County residents with outstanding customer service during this transition. And whereas the team not only started a fee-based recycling program, but also provided guidance and support to the program as the new contractor was selected to provide service. And whereas the considerable effort... and whereas considerable effort went on behind the scenes, including managing and refining data to generate the bill file for the newly-created billing system to include an online payment option, deployed an online application to allow citizens to opt-in or opt-out of the service or register for as a new participant, a community outreach campaign was launched and included video production, neighborhood and civic group presentations, implementation, and a web-based interactive recycling tool facilitated daily and weekly communication needs throughout social media. And whereas the substantial piece of this transition took place with a customer service team who tirelessly responded to thousands of telephone calls and emails, assisted with new and discontinued service and massive cart movement, they also managed thousands of accounts, ensuring customer information was correct and strive to provide our residents with the best service possible. This is a testament to the team's commitment and ongoing dedication to the success of the program. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Chairman of the Board of Supervisors of James City County, Virginia, does hereby recognize Pam Dawson, Holly Haney, Patricia Smith, Joanna Ripley, Dawn Alexi, Jim Hill, Jenny Toomes, Dave Broward Schmidt, Steve Curtis, Chris Coleman, Renee Dahlman, and Kim Hazelwood, and presents this award as a token of appreciation for their dedicated service to the county and the community." And if those individuals who are all here, would please come up. We will distribute these.[714.11][714.11](Applause).
Thank you guys so much.
Yes.
Absolutely.
Great job.
Incredible.
Good evening.
Enough tolerance.
Yay.
Two excellent choices, Chair.
Thank you.
Indeed.
Excellent job. Okay. Our next presentation is the Williamsburg Boat Club. Mr. Bruce Liffka is the President.
Hi, good evening, and thank you for letting us talk to you a little bit about the Williamsburg Boat Club. I'm Bruce Liffka. I'm the President of the Club. This is Tom Rooks, who's the Executive Director, and he basically runs all of our rowing operations. The first thing I just wanted to say is I moved to Williamsburg about 10 years ago, and I literally had no idea of the fantastic jewel of a water venue that we had in Williamsburg. And I was talking to Tom just a little bit before this, and he's been Coast Guard retired for a year or two after 20 some-odd years, and he's lived around the water his entire life, and I thought you had a great mind.
Yeah, we just... I'm shocked at how little utilized... How... We have the least built-up infrastructure and traffic of any water-based community I've ever lived in out of the 10 states I've lived in. Kind of shocks me. So as a community organization, getting people out on the water for us is... A large part of the mission is building that up, you know?
Right. And we think it's a great opportunity for the community. So let us tell you a little bit about our club. We're a community boat club, and that, for us, boat club is about rowing. And we... I would say we're... We are in the process of establishing, but I think we've really established a center of excellence in our region of the country for rowing among the community. And our region would be essentially what the U.S. Rowing Organization calls the Upper South. We serve virtually every skill level, so we want people out on the water regardless of height, weight, or age. We serve rowers from middle school. Our oldest rower just turned 80 this year, and he's going gangbusters. I don't think you want to get in his way as he's driving, but he's fine on the water.[952.11][952.11](Laughter). I can click?
Yep.
How do I change?
Just click left.
Left. Go ahead.
There you go.
Okay.
I'll take that.
Thank you. So rowing in Williamsburg has pretty much been a secret until about a decade ago. We start... We started rowing actually back in the Hornsby eras in the '80s and have been rowing off and on with College of William &amp; Mary. But we really exploded about 10 years ago or so when we established a youth program.
We started the youth program six years ago with 13 willing kids, and now we average about 80 on the high school side with a staff of eight coaches. Middle school program we started now is about 25, 30 kids rowing, and we've gone on to graduate rowers that are now at 20 different colleges and universities. One of our former high school kids actually is a college head coach already. So we've seen that the kids that we've worked with have really not only embraced sports, but fitness as a lifestyle and the ability to communicate that out to others. We're really proud of their success.
So in a very short period of time, we've gone from, I'd say, about a dozen adult rowers in the early 2000s to about 150, and we probably have about 300 people involved when we include all family members. We staged two major events a year at Chickahominy Riverfront Park, one in August and one in November. I'll talk just a smidgen about it later, but let's talk a little bit about where we are and what our facilities are. We have a beautiful park at Chickahominy Riverfront. I'm stunned every time I go in there and I walk the shorelines. The master plan improvements to me, having looked through what they are, just will enhance that park so much more.
And I think it'll turn... Looking at the master plan, it takes the park from something you just... You may go and visit because it's nice to see and turns into something that the community is utilizing. You know, and you start hosting major events, you start... You know, you start having more activities happen through the park, more people are visiting with purpose, and that not only draws people... Gives better resources to James City County residents, it also will bring people from further around. As an example, this summer, we had over 1,000 people. We had about 700 people show up to one of our races in August, which was wonderful, people from North Carolina up to New Jersey. And then this fall, we had over 1,000 people in the park for a one-day event, which was, you know, really fantastic.
Great. So we're able to do this with limited facilities but great cooperation, and it's important for us to pull... To call that out. So we could not have grown to the way we are without help from William &amp; Mary. We share a lot of things. I think we help them out as much, maybe now even a little bit more. We're probably two to three times their size of a program right now. And the park. The park has been incredibly helpful from the fact, you know, we needed safety launches, and all of the old John boats that they used to rent out were now our coaching launching boats, providing safety for our rowers.
This is a good chance to say thanks to you all as well, because last time we came before you was because we had boats weaving in out of 11-year-olds. You know, we had speedboats going through the creek, and it was, I mean, deadly. And that no-wake zone that you authorized has actually increased our ability to have a safe practice and have more types of rowers out there of different ages and abilities.
So I'm just going to touch for 30 seconds. We're working on three important things with the park right now as part of the master plan. One is the water access. So one of the things that we are charged to do with our vision is to offer rowing to everybody, and that includes people with disabilities. Currently, we can't do that. We don't have a waterfront access that is able for that type of thing, and our facilities really aren't set up for that. One of the important programs that we're going to start this year is some limited adaptive rowing, and within the park plan is also improving the dock system, so we will have disabled access.
It's hard to say we're a community organization if everybody in the community can't take part if they choose to. And with the amount of large veteran and retiree community we have here, getting into adaptive rowing for us is really the next frontier of serving the community better and giving those people more opportunities for fitness outside of just a controlled rec... You know, gym environment.
And the second thing is traffic flow. So we have a lot of kids running around. We have a lot of college kids and high school kids driving around, and we have a lot of campers in the park. So we have a... We've worked through a plan that actually is going to improve the safety and traffic flow to the boathouse and move the RV storage to a different section of the park, and that's going in place in the spring, and that's a great thing for us. And then the final thing is a boathouse. And our club has just approved a capital fund to raise money for... For raising money with that, we're looking for, again, a public-private partnership similar to the WISC that we're talking about with the park that we hope to have moving forward in the next year or so. And we're just starting that, and we'll be announcing our campaign for raising funds in the next month or so. Finally, these are our events. Tom's already talked about it. I think the one that I'd like to focus on... First, I'd like to say Williamsburg is about bringing people to the town. We think we can be a great event that brings people to our town. There are some classic races that we will never be the size of, but it provides some scope. The Head of the School Call, it's been 40 years old. It brings 9,000 entries to the race, 30,000 or 40,000 spectators. We don't want that many people in the park, but that's an example of what rowing can bring. We'd like 5,000. The Head of the Chick has the potential to be there. That's currently a November event, and we think we have a path to opening and doubling that. So we may come back and report back on that progress, but anything that we can do in cooperation with the county would be most appreciated. And we wanted to leave you with some of what we see every day when we're out on the water, just some beautiful visuals that are there all the time. And thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Senator. Good evening. Thank you.[1339.21][1339.21](Applause). Okay. Our next presentation will be James City County Audit Report, which will be including the JCSA audit and so forth. This, I will ask Ms. Sadler to open the JCSA meeting and get us to that point where we can get this presentation for both.
This is my gavel tonight. I call to order this meeting of the James City Service Authority Board of Directors for a regular meeting. Good evening, Mr. Powell.
Good evening.
Would you please call the roll?
Mr. Hippel?
Here.
Ms. Larson?
Here.
Mr. McGlinnan?
Here.
Ms. Eisenhower?
Ms. Sadler?
Here.
And we have Leslie Roberts, audit planner, partner with Brown Edwards.
Yes. Okay. Hi, I'm Leslie Roberts. You guys pretty much all know me. I come here and this time of year all the time. I'm going to try to be as brief as possible because I can see that you've got a full agenda this evening. Overall, the audit went well. Sharon and her team, Sheryl, a great addition to the team, were a big help. They were ready for us. They were available throughout the audit, and so everything went smoothly. We had no new Gatsby's to implement this year, so that helped a lot. I think in order to be as brief as possible, I'm just going to go over the reports that are within our audit. The first report is on page 1 to 3, and that's the overall audit report. And that's basically the bottom line, were we able to come in here, look at your books, and opine on them and say they present fairly your operations and the results of your operations and the balances at the end of the year, and you've got another clean audit report. And also, because your audit has to be done under governmental auditing standards, you have another report that's a report over financial reporting. And if we had any issues with financial reporting, then that would be in that report. We did not find any material weaknesses or significant deficiencies over financial reporting or any compliance issues with governmental accounting standards. And so that's another clean report, and that's another report that's all in that big capper that you have. The other report relates to federal money. Anytime you get more than $750,000 in federal expenditures, even more than that, you have to do what's called a single audit. It's like an audit within an audit. And so we have a report on that, and that is a clean report as well. And that's kind of more of a compliance, not so much a financial statement audit. And so we pick different programs each year and audit those programs. And this year, we actually separated the county from the schools, and so the schools' programs were audited separately this year, so I'll be reporting on those separately. But again, no compliance issues and no internal control issues. So another clean report. We also issue what we used to call the management letter, and if we had anything that we didn't think were significant deficiencies but were something we wanted to bring to your attention, we would point that out. Yours is pretty much boilerplate. We didn't have any of that. It's got a copy of the rep letter, and it's got, if you're having trouble sleeping, a summary of the new Gatsby's that are coming down the pike, so you can read up on that, some of which will not impact you, some will in a material way. But we'll be talking and dialoguing with your staff as we get closer to implementing, and we'll help them with implementation to the extent they need. I mean, you've got a very strong financial staff, so typically, we can give them a little guidance, and they just roll with it. But anyway, I'd like to thank them for their cooperation throughout the audit and making it as uneventful as possible, and thank you guys for letting Brown Edwards continue to serve you. Do you have any questions about the audit?
No, just a thank you to you, but especially to our financial... I think it speaks really highly of the fact that we lost a long-term CFO, and Sharon has stepped in to lead that department in an incredible way. So my thanks to her and her staff. And then you said you were going to go over the schools' audits separately. Would that be with the school board?
Yep, I'm heading over there right after this.[1593.11][1593.11](Laughter).
And then to the jail.
What?
And then to the jail.
And then to the jail and to water next week. Thank you. All right, thanks.
Thank you so much.
Good evening, Mr. Powell. We're going to continue with our JCSA meeting. We've already had our... We've had our report as well. We're all covered?
Yes, ma'am.
We're good to go with that?
And I do not have any speaker cards for public comment.
No public comment. Next will be the consent calendar, changes to regulations governing utility service, meter for private water supply.
Move the adoption of the consent calendar.
On favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Next will be public hearings. None?
No public hearings.
Board considerations? Nope. Board considerations?
No board considerations.
Board requests and directives?
Yes.
We're good. General manager's update?
I don't have anything to add to my report.
Very good. Well, then I will look for a motion to adjourn until 4:00 PM on January 2nd, 2020 for the organizational meeting.
So move.
Mr. Powell?
Mr. Hippel?
Aye.
Ms. Larson?
Aye.
Mr. McGlinnan?
Aye.
Ms. Eisenhower?
Aye.
Ms. Sadler?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. We're adjourned.
Thank you. Okay. We have completed our presentations, and we are now down to public comment. And before we start public comment, I will ask the Board to... For a motion to amend the agenda to move our board consideration, aye, up to immediately following our public comment before the consent calendar. So move, Mr. Chairman. We have a motion. Mr. Stevens, call it. Mr. Hippel?
Aye.
Ms. Larson?
Aye.
Ms. Sadler?
Aye.
Mr. McGlinnan?
Aye.
Ms. Eisenhower?
Aye.
Motion carried. Okay. All right. The main event. Okay. Ladies and gentlemen, we have an unusually large number of speak people who wish to make public comment this evening. In order to hear from as many as possible, we limit the comment to one minute per person. I think everybody's been advised of that. When you're at the podium, you have three lights up there. The yellow light comes on, you'll be... You have 15 seconds remaining on your minute, and at that point, you should begin your summary so that you will be done when the red light comes on. As a courtesy to your fellow speakers, we respectfully ask that you cease speaking when the red light comes on. Please begin your comments with your name and address to include locality where you live. We need this information for the public record. We're here to listen to the opinions of our citizens in a civil and deliberative process. We ask that you all refrain from vocalizing your sentiments, either pro or con, after each speaker. If we can do that, we can probably get through this in a fairly expeditious manner, so that now everybody's out here in the rain later this evening. If you wish... If your wish is to influence the five of us, I think you should know that outbursts of clapping, cheering, or booing will probably not help your case, and in fact, might harm it. We all deserve to be treated with respect regardless of our opinions on the subject at hand, and I would ask you to please abide by that when we go through this evening. We're going to call folks up. I think everybody has a number. We're going to call them up the first 10 at a time, and I would like them to line up and so we can get them to speak. And as we get the list down, we'll bring the next group in. We are ready for 1 through 10?
Sure.
Okay. If we could start out with our speakers, 1 through 10, and... And as we get the list down, we'll bring the next group in. We are ready for 1 through 10?
Sure.
Okay, if we could start out with our speakers, 1 through 10, and... I think we might have nine and 10 are, haven't checked in yet, but you can do that. And if, Renee, if you would make sure that anybody isn't at 1 through 10 who's outside gets to come in and lined up, please. So we will make an effort to make sure that everybody gets a chance to do this. Please, sir.
My name is Larry Koch, I'm at 13 Jan. Ray Circle in James City County. I come here tonight to ask you to consider the resolution that's being presented against, before you, to affirm James City County's citizens' constitutional rights that are guaranteed by the United States Constitution and the Constitution of Virginia, which have been upheld by the United States Supreme Court, that it is an individual right to keep and bear arms, and that applied to all bearable arms, including those not in founding at the time of our founding. I urge you to send a swift message to Richmond that this county supports the rights of its citizens to protect itself in any legal manner, that if citizens of this county who legally own firearms are not criminals. They are not the ones that are out committing crime. They're just average persons trying to defend themselves, and they don't want their rights trampled on. We ask that you please protect from any unconstitutional law that may be passed and send that message to Richmond. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Number two.
Good evening. I'm here to speak in favor of the resolution as well, and don't have much time, so I just want to point out two things.
Could you give us your name and address, please?
My name is Adam Garrison.
Thank you.
And 402 London Company Way.
Thank you, go ahead.
So there's a lot of talk of common sense in this discussion, and I believe we all ultimately want the same outcomes, which are safer communities. But the appeal to common sense has become an attempt to insulate against complexity by relying on cognitive biases that involve consensus and the laundering of opinion into policy. Common sense in this context becomes a refrain that celebrates a collective lack of knowledge. So I want to leave everyone with a question, and that's why. Why do we have an administration pushing for new gun laws who has not only failed to, but refuses to fully enforce the laws that we already have and prosecute those to the fullest extent of the law? So I would ask this board to protect the law-abiding in our community and support this resolution as a statement to Richmond that we want more than soundbite solutions. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Number three.
Good evening. Christine Payne, Jackie's Neck Trail, James City County. Legislation drafted in response to an overwhelming demand from voters to reduce gun violence is causing angst from members of the gun lobby. Some travel from county to county en masse and armed, seeking sanctuary from a perceived threat to their right to bear arms. Let's rid ourselves of the notion that protecting the rights of law-abiding gun owners and strengthening gun laws to improve public safety are mutually exclusive endeavors. Similar laws passed in other states are effective, have withstood judicial scrutiny for decades, and are indeed constitutional. Virginia is a Dillon state rule, a Dillon Rule state. The General Assembly enacts laws, and those sworn to protect and serve our communities are obligated to implement, not obstruct them. We do not set policy based on mob rule. It is the rule of law to which we must adhere. I oppose any further consideration of gun sanctuaries and look forward to the board's support of gun safety measures such as universal background checks when passed by the General Assembly. Thank you.
Number four.
Good evening. I'm Bill Sizemore, 4704 Yarrow Court, James City County. I am unalterably opposed to the so-called Second Amendment Sanctuary Measure for a multitude of reasons why this is a bad idea. I'll only mention one because that's all the time I have, and that is, should you pass such a measure, you will be placing yourselves and the law enforcement officers who work for you in legal jeopardy for failing to carry out duly enacted laws of the state of Virginia. The voters of Virginia spoke in the elections last month. They sent a new majority to the General Assembly in Richmond who are committed to passing common sense gun violence prevention legislation. Please don't stand in their way. Thanks.
Number five.
Good evening. I'm Jennifer Tierney. I live at 2824 Linden Lane in James City County, and I'm speaking today opposed to declaring James City County a Second Amendment Sanctuary County. I'd like to point out that we are a community that lives and breathes on tourism. Tourism pumps $431 million into James City County's economy, and we live in a world where people turn to Google to research where to take their families on vacation. Imagine Googling James City County, and along with Jamestown and Bush Gardens, you learn that James City County will not enforce laws of the Commonwealth of Virginia concerning guns. That is lawlessness, and that's enough to scare tourists from visiting here and spending their money in our county, which is vital to our economy. Thank you.
Number six.
Mary Ann Moxon here, 2920 Nathaniel's Run, James City County. I'm one of the members of the local League of Women Voters here tonight, but I'm speaking as an individual. I believe in defending the individual liberties guaranteed by our Constitution, as do most of us, I hope. But my two grade school grandsons tell me about the frightening active shooter drills taking place in their schools on a regular basis. What about their rights to freedom from unnecessary fear? Our Supreme Court in 2008 affirmed the Second Amendment right to our guns, to own guns for self-defense. They also wrote that this right is not an unlimited one. Regulation is necessary. Our founding fathers also used the words "well-regulated" in the Second Amendment. Gun safety was the top, a top voting issue in the recent election, and the voters have spoken. Please do not undermine their votes by supporting a Second Amendment Sanctuary here in James City County. Thank you.
Thank you. Number seven.
Hi, I'm Luca. I'm seven years old. I feel that we need more gun safety laws in our state and local area because I don't feel safe knowing that anyone could be hiding a gun and pull it out and shoot. Two years ago, I stood up and talked to the community about being a kid scared about guns. Yet there has been no change that makes our community safer, and nearly 2,000 people have died from gun violence in our state since then. Please do not pass the gun sanctuary resolution for the safety of me and other kids in our community. Please protect our future.
Number eight.
Hi, my name is Ari Albany-Shy. I live at 3024 John Vaughn here in James City County. I'm a local parent and a faculty member in William &amp; Mary's Economics Department. I strongly believe that we need common sense gun laws in our state to keep us all safe. Our community has seen rapid growth over the past 10 years, attracting young families and retirees alike. A big part of that appeal is that our community is seen as safe. We have vibrant schools, community colleges, and a world-class university, but unfortunately, these kinds of places are increasingly being seen as sites of gun violence. My kids come home from school terrified by lockdown drills and concerned about their safety. In classrooms, my students and I fret about active shooters and mass shooter drills. Our county should be doing what it can to improve safety measures, not making statements against gun safety. Who knows what kind of liabilities this kind of resolution will open us up into? Measures like background checks don't impose on people's Second Amendment rights, but will go a long way toward keeping our community safe. Thank you.
Thank you. Leave numbers nine and 10 are not here. Is that correct? Okay. We start, do we have nine or 10? No. Yeah, I don't, let's, next is, 11. Number 11. 11 through 20, if we can line them up, please.
My name's Rook Monahan. I live at 202 Charterhouse Lane. Listening to the other comments, I think probably one thing in this room we could all agree on is the division, the chaos, the vitriol, if you will, that defines our political landscape needs to change going forward. If we allow ourselves to drift away from the constitutional foundation that has held our society together throughout our history, our worst fears are going to be realized. If the people want to change the Second Amendment, there's a constitutional process to do it, but a simple partisan majority in Richmond with a complicit executive cannot be allowed to fulfill that function. We have an excellent opportunity to declare, to affirm the supremacy of the Constitution in James City County tonight and send a strong message to all those who might believe otherwise. I ask you all to do just that tonight and vote unanimously to pass this resolution. Thank you.
12.
Hey, I'm Max Blalock. I'm at 2772 Linden Lane, and I'm also happen to be a United Methodist pastor, but I'm speaking here as a private citizen. And one of the miracles of tonight might be a pastor limiting himself to one minute in speaking, so we'll see how this goes. I'm here to affirm that as a person of faith, and all of our faith at their best are a faith that affirm life, and guns are tools of death, and to increase the proliferation of guns in our communities simply increases the chance, chances of people dying in our parks, in our shopping areas, in our schools. And I hope and pray that we will continue to work as an esteemed Board of Supervisors and my neighbor, John, together as a community and as Board of Supervisors to create communities that are safer and better for all of our citizens. Thank you.
Number 13.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. My name is Linda Rice, and I live at 2394 Forge Road. I'm here to speak against the proposed resolution, and I would say, do not mistake really what has happened to cause this gathering. We have a rational fear of legislation that hasn't even been passed yet in the General Assembly. We have, to some extent, intimidation going on of our community leaders and also general members of the community. And finally, I think we have a lot of misunderstanding out in the community and really in the Commonwealth about really what is meant by the constitutionality of the Second Amendment. And I'd like to remind everybody that it really ultimately is the courts that determine what is constitutional. Universal background checks have not even come before the courts yet. And with that, I'd like to say we have a season of faith rather than a season of fear.
Thank you. Next, 14.
Good evening. My name is Dr. Mark Downey, 121 Horseshoe Drive in York County. I'm here to speak on behalf of all the children I take care of as a pediatrician and urge you to oppose the resolution creating a sanctuary city for a gun sanctuary, a Second Amendment Sanctuary. My life has been spent protecting children and family. We are seeing evidence-based legislation being passed across the country that has been proven to decrease gun violence and, more importantly, decrease the deaths in children and the impact on their families. So I urge you to oppose this resolution and act for the safety of our children and our families in this community. Thank you.
Number 15, Mr.?
My name is Wayne Moyer, and I reside at 268 Peach Street, Norwich. I wish to comment on the proposed Resolution on Constitutional Affirmation. In my opinion, this resolution is an utter waste of time and public funds. Every supervisor sitting here has taken an oath to support the Constitution of the United States and that of the Commonwealth of Virginia. Why go through the charade of acting out what you already have sworn to? The resolution and others like it is a blatant attempt to foreclose serious consideration of measures to limit gun deaths. Guns killed over 1,000 Virginians in 2018, and of these, some 500 were suicides. These are the issues we should be addressing. I urge you to avoid against this meaningless resolution. Thank you.
Number 16.
My name is Jojo DiCipio. I live on the College of William &amp; Mary at 500 F Ucrop Way. I'm here today to speak on behalf of the youth of America and give you all an inkling of what it's like to go into school during mass shooting culture. When Parkland happened, I was a senior in high school. The day after Parkland, I went to school, and the fear in the air was tangible. Every time a door slammed closed, students screamed. My younger sister is 15. She's a sophomore in high school, and she refuses to go into public places. She talks to me day in and day out of how much fear she has because of this, and she's now seeing a counselor because of the amount of trauma that it has caused her. I've had conversations with my mother, who's a high school teacher, and I have begged her, if anything ever happens in her classroom, not to protect her students, but to protect herself. This is what we are living with, and I implore you not to go against the laws that have been passed by our government, and do not pass this sanctuary.
17.
Good evening. My name is Will Sandberg. I am also a student at William &amp; Mary, and I reside at 300 Richmond Road. So most of my life has been spent just inundated with mass shooting after mass shooting and gun violence after gun violence. It's not the mass shootings that break the news that are the most prevalent, it's my classmate that blew his brains out when he couldn't deal with the stress of school. It's one of our own William &amp; Mary students that thought he was safe going down to parties down in Norfolk and gets shot on the street and left to die. We don't discuss the actual intersectionality of gun violence often enough. If you look at the crowd here today, I'd be surprised if you could find more than 10 people my age or younger, and we are the ones that are being most affected by this. It's not the older generations that have grown up with gun violence, it's my generation, and I'm terrified to go to class each day. I don't like having just one door in my building because I don't have a way to escape.
Thank you.
So please listen.
Number 18.
Good evening. I'm Les Solomon, 113 Weatherburn Lane. I stand in opposition to this amendment. I was in Charlottesville in August 2017. There, I joined 55 other persons of faith who quietly walked to the Robert E. Lee statue to take a peaceful stand against the outpouring of racist and anti-Semitic venom. As we entered the square, I was shocked to discover that a volunteer Pennsylvania military militia group, not our local law enforcement officers, had taken over. For more than three hours, our group stood face-to-face against the militia, all of them heavily armed. I can only imagine how much worse that fateful day could have been if Charlottesville had this amendment, or this resolution. On behalf of our citizens, our children, and tourists, please defeat this amendment. Thank you.
19.
Anne Brennan, 159 Lakewood Drive, James City County. I have two points. First, Virginia's been a Dillon Rule state since 1896. Change that rule, and then perhaps cities and counties will be able to make their own rules. My second point has to do with public safety. Evidence shows that fewer people die from gun violence with strong gun laws. JCC's population growth makes it evident that we are less rural than we were or are going to be in the future. Therefore, Second Amendment Sanctuary is unconstitutional and unnecessary. It's an idea ginned up to bully elected officials into believing that gun rights must be somehow restored and that gun control has somehow gone too far. This is disingenuous and absurd. Do not recognize James City County as a Second Amendment Sanctuary.
20.
Hi, Jordan Stoffko at the College of William &amp; Mary Campus, 313 Jamestown Road. I'm originally from Connecticut, where I went to Sandy Hook Elementary School. This is where a mentally ill man gained access to an AR-15 and murdered 26 innocent people. 20 of them were children between the ages of six and seven. The night after the shooting, the little girl I lived next to told my sisters and I that she watched her best friend get shot in the head. She was the only one in the closet that her teacher had stowed her and her classmates in that survived the shooter. Proper gun regulation could have prevented her from having to face a murder, sit in a closet with her dying friends, and wait to be rescued. You cannot be, she was six years old. You cannot begin to understand the reality or severity of the situation until it directly affects you, but these things do happen, and in a horrifyingly excessive amount. However, we can prevent them, we can save lives, preserve families, and build safe homes if we implement common sense policies in regard to the possession of weapons, not by fighting firearms with firearms. Thank you.
21.
Good evening, Board Members. Joseph Swannenberg, 3026, The Point Drive. There is nothing in any of the proposed bills in Richmond that would stop gun violence or prevent mass shootings such as Virginia Tech or Virginia Beach. The Second Amendment is not a restriction on flint locks or AR-15s.
The Second Amendment is not a restriction on flint locks or AR-15s. The Second Amendment is not a restriction on bolt action or magazine capacities. The Second Amendment is a restriction on the government from taking away the right of the people to keep and bear arms. I do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the Commonwealth of Virginia, and that I will faithfully and impartially discharge all the duties incumbent upon me according to the best of my ability. James City County should not only be a Second Amendment sanctuary, but a Bill of Rights sanctuary. You cannot pick and choose which parts of the Constitution you support and uphold. Your oath of office does not give you that option. Support this resolution, please.
Number 22.
Hello. My name is Rich Watkins, 3703 South Square. I'm a 15-year resident and voter here in James City County. I've owned guns for more than 60 years. In fifth and sixth grades, I would carry my .22 rifle to the principal's office every Wednesday morning so after school I could walk to the YMCA shooting range. In junior high, I recall studying NRA, Safe Hunting Literature, before my first rabbit hunt with my new .28 shotgun. On the rifle team and as a hunter, I learned from an early age the importance of gun safety. The Virginia Assembly plans to address issues of mental health, but I believe more than that must be done to address the crisis of gun-related deaths in our homes, streets, and schools. Therefore, I support common sense gun safety legislation. I do not support this resolution.
Number 23.
Good evening. Adrian Carter, 100 Lauren Court. My comments this evening is directed to those of you who are still fighting the Civil War, those of you who are gearing up for the Second, and to the arms dealers in the middle for your influence as compensated influencers. Partisan gerrymandering has been repealed in the state of Virginia, and without the benefit of a state electoral college, the people of the Commonwealth have spoken through the one-man, one-vote rule. Think about that. The Second Amendment debate in this county should not be rooted in ignorance and fear, but in common sense and harm reduction. This resolution is not necessary, and it should not be moved to a vote. And shame on you, Susie Sadler.
Sue, thank you.
Ma'am, we will please refrain from making any comments about any of the Board members. Speak to the issues, please. Do we have number 24? Yeah, I did. I showed not checked in, so. Number 25. Thank you.
Hampu Show, 103 Kimberly Court, Yorktown. I'm a former NRA member. I go to court with students who have been illegally charged with firearms possession in their vehicles on school property. I find the law abhorrent that allows such firearms possession by students. However, I have worked tirelessly to support the legal rights of these students until such time their actions are made illegal by the General Assembly. I find it hypocritical that the Virginia Citizens Defense League's Phil Van Cleve, author of the original resolution, has refused to come to the aid of these students. He refused to stand up for their legal rights, as stated in the Code of Virginia, because it was not a political pony he wanted to ride. You have sworn an oath to uphold the laws of the land no matter how abhorrent you may find them. If you want to serve, excuse me, if you want to ensure firearms can lawfully be purchased and possessed by anybody, anywhere, at any time, then lobby your legislators as individuals to submit bills to achieve that goal, but do not spend taxpayer dollars to achieve your personal political desires. I find this current resolution affronts the legality legally elected members of the General Assembly. Thank you.
Ma'am, number 26. Is that, I believe 26 is missing. Okay, 27. Thank you.
How are y'all doing? Evan Ozzo, 7600 Uncle's Neck. Throughout middle school and high school, I participated in 4/8 shooting sports and with proposed gun laws that will eliminate these programs in teaching youth how to properly shoot and handle firearms, and I ask you to support this amendment. Thank you.
Number 28.
Tony Burrow, 413 Fairfax Way. I urge you to support the resolution. We heard a lot of motions tonight, or today. Here are the facts. Our U.S. and Virginia Constitution, State Code, and Supreme Court say, "Right of the people to keep and bear arms shall not be infringed." Military should be governed by civil power. Militia shall consist of all able-bodied residents of Virginia who are citizens of the United States. That's us. There are 8.5 million Virginians, 2.8 million of all political parties who own firearms. Majority of homes have firearms. Of the 60,000 deaths in Virginia last year, only 340 were firearm homicides, zero in James City County. The Virginia firearm homicide rate is only .004%. You have a better chance of getting struck by lightning than murdered with a gun. Virginia has the fourth lowest violent crime rate in the nation because uninfringed gun ownership is a deterrent. Virginia doesn't have a firearm problem. Dangerous cities have a firearm ban problem. Radical special interest groups falsely blame gun violence on law-abiding citizens in order to disguise their agenda of power, money, and control. In addition, U.S. annually, gun owners prevent 2.5 million crimes, and 90% of gun crimes take place in gun-free zones. Thank you.
Number 29. And ready, do we have 31 on it? Okay, very good. Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Doug Hanson. I live at 3416 Avery Circle. I'm against a resolution that opposes enforcing Virginia's laws. It seems like some laws should be opposed on moral grounds or because they're unduly repressive, but we should really know what we're opposing before we start off on this path. If you all have time to debate this kind of issue, I would much rather you do, you debate issues that help the public. You debate resolutions to help the homeless, resolutions to help the mentally ill, resolutions to protect our democracy. I encourage you to do something worthwhile and for the good of the community. Thank you.
30.
Thank you for hearing me. My name is Rick Timberlake. I live at 4147 Whifford Way in James City County. I've come out in support of establishing James City County as a Second Amendment sanctuary because a message must be sent to Richmond that law-abiding, responsible gun owners are not the cause of gun violence in this country or in this state. The bills that are being prefiled right now in Richmond, they're not sitting in committee, they're not sitting in the back room waiting to be discussed. These bills are prefiled that will interfere with our right to peaceful assembly, that will interfere with our Fourth Amendment and Fifth Amendment rights under the Constitution of the United States. I ask the Board of Supervisors to please consider this resolution as a firm message to Richmond that you can buy politicians without a state money, but you can't buy law-abiding, loyal gun owners. Thank you.
I believe 31 is absent as well. 32.
My name is David Richards. I live at 3405 William Hodgson. About a month ago, I had the privilege of going for a naturalization interview. And when I was flying back yesterday, I'd seen this original version of the resolution. I was sort of horrified by it because, you know, we have many rights that need protecting, and the legislature tries to expand those rights, be it the right to vote, be it eminent domain, be it owning guns. And secondly, it was completely unclear who would decide what the Second Amendment right is. The Constitution tells us there's a legal system that tells us what rights, you know, if something's illegal, if it's constitutional, if it's unconstitutional. And finally, let me just make one remark. I mean, the legislature has a program that it wants, that we have, they have the right to do that, and if we object, there's a courthouse, you know, 10 miles down the street that we can protest to and take it to court. Okay, thank you.
Number 33.
Hi. Suzanne Stern, 128 Spring Branch, James City County. Operation of the resolution, third from the bottom, is unclear to me, but I take it to mean that none among you will be making a determination whether a law, the Commonwealth of Virginia, is unconstitutional. Clarification on that resolution would be helpful. I'd like to put the Board on notice of the law as enunciated by the United States Supreme Court in its seminal Second Amendment decision, District of Columbia versus Heller. This is from the majority opinion of the conservative justice Antonin Scalia. Like most rights, the right secured by the Second Amendment is not unlimited. From Blackstone through the 19th century cases, commentators and courts routinely explained that the right was not a right to keep and carry any weapon whatsoever in any manner whatsoever and for whatever purpose. Scalia continues, "Nothing in our opinion should be taken to cast doubt on laws forbidding the carrying of firearms in sensitive places such as schools and government buildings, or laws imposing conditions and qualifications on the commercial sale of arms."
Vincent D'Arrozio, 6504 Yancey Court, Williamsburg, Virginia. I'm an NRA-certified firearms instructor, and I am chairman of Lafayette Gun Club of Virginia Training and Education Committee. We have trained hundreds of law-abiding Virginians in the safe and correct use of firearms, so I know a little about guns. I want to address SB 16 in particular, although others may also apply. The current bill as written is vague, all-encompassing, and poorly written, subject to various interpretations, maybe by design. As such, I believe it's draconian in nature and merely a gun grab. I believe it would not withstand constitutional scrutiny as a dozen fringe. It criminalizes citizens who have done absolutely nothing wrong. While it may only be symbolic, please vote James City County a 2/8 sanctuary and let Richmond know that we don't like what they're doing. A quote from Edmund Burke, "Those who don't know history are doomed to repeat it." Thank you. I yield.
Number 35.
My name's Sam McClintock. I've been in JCC for about 10 years now. I started my adult life as an Army Ranger. Just to let you know, I know a little bit about weapons. And I carried a weapon similar to the one that killed the six adults and 20 children at Sandy Hook. Mass shootings like that are all too often and all too common now, and it shows that we have a country that has problems with gun violence. As assault rifles, there's no reason for the public to have them. So if the county passes a Second Amendment sanctuary that interferes with the Commonwealth or the nation on restricting the sales of assault rifles, then you're going to have an issue. There's no reason to have a Second Amendment sanctuary here, and there's no reason to interfere with the cadre of the excellent law enforcement people we have at the college, the city, and the JCC level. Please don't entertain this. It's insanity. We have plenty of laws. We need to let the laws continue and let the law enforcement people do their job.
Thank you. Number 36.
Thank you, Andre Pivantsha, from 106 Leaks of Leath here in Williamsburg. I, too, would like to read the majority opinion of U.S. Supreme Court tackled the issue in 2008 District of Columbia. The majority opinion stated, "A person has a legal right to own a weapon to protect themselves, herself, family, and property." The framers also intended individuals to protect themselves not only from fellow citizens but participate in a militia specifically outlined in the Second Amendment stating necessary to the security of a free state. I therefore am in support of this resolution. Furthermore, President James Madison wrote, "What is governed itself but a reflection of human nature? If men were angels, no government would be necessary. If angels were to govern, no controls and government would be necessary." New laws, and I do feel for the people who have lost their lives in these mass shootings, but let me emphasize this and challenge all those who say this. New laws governing firearms don't prevent persons determined to take your life and property. If laws controlled men, then laws such as laws against murder would be sufficient. So again, further laws are not required. Thank you.
Number 37.
Hello. My name is Gari Aldape. I'm a James City County resident. I have to say, my views are my own, expressed here and not any agency that I work for. I'd like you to vote to adopt and make James City County a Second Amendment sanctuary. I have about a decade of police work. I'm a decade into my career, and I've worked in very rural areas where it takes about 45 minutes response to urban areas, including New Orleans and Baltimore, very crime-ridden cities. Disarming victims is not what makes people safe, and we just, they just need to be armed to protect themselves in the immediate sense. And I very much would like to, for James City County, to respect the rule of law, which is the Constitution, and adopt the sanctuary city.
Thank you. Number 38, I believe, is not here. Okay, number 39.
Good evening. My name is Miles Diamond. I live in Toono. I sent y'all an email last night about 10 o'clock. It was a great read, I'm sure, and I wanted to let you put a face to that text. I support the resolution, and I hope you pass it. Let me start by saying, we don't pick and choose at a buffet what parts of the constitutions for our states and our federal government that we like and enforce. And there is a, we live with them until we change them, and there's a way to change those, and that is through conventions at which point we pass amendments that modify those constitutions. There's a process, and we follow the process. Secondly, guns don't have rights, people have rights, and those rights are in that Constitution. Let me close by saying that it is wholly appropriate that you communicate with the political representatives at the state and federal.
We'll be glad to do so. If you're over your time, sir, if you could yield to the next speaker. Thank you. Number, I believe, number 40 is missing. Number 41?
This is 40.
40? Oh, very good.
Keith Beaumont, 224 Edinburgh. The SB 16 and 64 in draft are outrages against both the Virginia and the U.S. Constitution. And I also would also submit that the Dillon Rule is a compact that only exists when the state, the State House, follows the same, that very same Constitution. The Second Amendment and all of our Bill of Rights, they're the DNA of our liberty. It's what identifies us as Americans, and that's why the founding fathers, in their wisdom, preserved for posterity the Bill of Rights so at such a time as this, there'd be a defense for us all. And so on that basis, I urge all of you to put a firewall around James City County and prevent us from further tyrannical outrages by the state of Virginia. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Number 41.
Good evening. Robert Meekins, 124 McCauley Road. Over the past five years, fewer than 300 people are murdered per year via firearm in Virginia, on average, for rifles, specifically about eight. We have over 8 million people in this state, and we probably have more guns than that. Our current state laws are not broken, and there are more efficient, less invasive, and more inclusive methods to reduce gun murder as well as violence overall. If these laws pass, I believe it is wrong for the state to send men with guns to the home of peaceful, peaceful, yet noncompliant person in order to enforce, under threat of violence, laws that are, laws of questionable constitutionality, laws that offend our civil and natural rights, and laws that are statistically irrelevant to the outcome they claim. Second Amendment sanctuary status in James City County is the correct path to avoid an unnecessary and deeply unethical conflict in the place we call home and to show Richmond that their proposed legislation is not acceptable. Thank you for your consideration. Go tribe.
Number 42.
Good evening, Board members. Barbara Henry, 141 Devon Road. I am here regarding the Second Amendment resolution proposed this afternoon. I fully realize that my support of this resolution, this public stance, is an effort to send a political message to this board and to Richmond. I personally know of several other citizens who wanted to be here today but could not attend because of this inappropriate start time of 5:00. This board took an oath of office to uphold the Constitution of the United States and the Commonwealth of Virginia. The proposed bills we will be facing in January for gun control do indeed infringe upon the right of the people to keep and bear arms. The proposed gun restrictions will disarm or handicap law-abiding citizens in their right to defense and turn law-abiding gun owners, like myself, into criminals. I request the Board to vote in favor of James City County becoming a Second Amendment sanctuary. End of comment. Thank you.
Thank you. Number 43.
Good evening. Rob Charles, James City County. In 1768, British tried to forcefully get the inhabitants of 13 colonies to surrender their weapons. Some of the colonials gave up and handed over their weapons, but a small group of them said, "No, we ain't giving up anything." The small group was only 3% of the entire colonial population, 3% that went up against the largest standing military force at the time, and used those very same weapons to defend themselves against tyrants, the very same tyrants who were trying to disarm them. And guess what? 3% won. Ladies and gentlemen, I'll be blunt. On which side of history do you wish to be on? The side that upholds and defends the Constitution of these United States and Virginia? Or would you rather side with tyrants, the ones that are trying to do the very same thing they did all those years ago? I can tell you one thing, there's a lot more than 3% of Virginia that's more than willing to stand and defend their constitutional rights against tyranny, and I'm one of them. God bless you. God bless Virginia. May God bless the United States of America, six hundred tyrannists. Sincerely, We the People. Thank you for your time.
Number 44.
Hello. Colin Romanek, 700 Circle, James City County. I'm here to speak in support of the resolution. Looking at the bills that have been proposed, I think they're overreaching. They were done in a partisan way. They were done in a partisan way. I don't think there's been any negotiations to make anything that's really going to have an impact or prevent the type of tragedies that we've seen in the past with gun violence. A lot of very vague language used in these, and a lot of people I know who are veterans, friends, family, neighbors, are going to be criminals overnight that legally purchased these weapons, and now all of a sudden, they can't have them, they're being told they have to dispose of them, get them out of state, or do something else with them, certainly not get the value for them that they should either. But infringing on those rights, I think we need to send a message to Richmond and this new General Assembly coming in that this overreach isn't going to be tolerated and that James City County stands for the Constitution of the United States. Thank you.
Number forty-five.
Good evening, members. My name's Bob Lambert. I live in Toono. I just moved here about a year ago from Illinois, and I moved here to get away from their Second Amendment tyranny up in that state. Now here I am, once again. I flew F-14s right down the road back in the eighties, defending the Constitution of the United States. I'm a law-abiding citizen. I'm getting sick and tired of being blamed every time there's a shooting in this country, being blamed for what goes on. I'm a law-abiding citizen. If my guns left my, where they're stored, my safe, and they went out and shot people indiscriminately, I'd be the first one to give them up. As a matter of fact, I'd go and round them up myself and cut them up. But they're inanimate objects, and I know for a fact they're not going to do that, and I'm not going to do that. So please, support this resolution. Thank you.
Forty-six.
Good evening. I'm Peg Borman, Seventeen Settlers Lane. First of all, let me commend you on the way that you've handled this evening's events. Your staff has done an excellent job of containing all of the timeframes. And I came here to talk about three Rs in trash tonight, but instead, I'm going to talk about the Second Amendment, and I want it to be adhered to as it has been the previous eight decades of my life. I have guns, but they have not harmed anyone that I know of, and I don't think that they will, but there are laws on the books that needs to be adhered, enforced, so that they, with no additional bans to making that necessary. There have been many more deaths due to abortions than any guns in this state, so I urge you to vote yes on tonight's resolution.
Forty-seven.
Good evening. My name is Dorothy Fisher. I live at 102 Royal St. George's in James City County. I've been listening to all of the arguments of the people who are against guns, and they're very touching. I was attacked when I was nineteen years old. I have a child who was held up at gunpoint. I believe that if we had been able to be armed, that wouldn't have happened. I think that taking away my right to protect myself is not the way to do this. I truly hope you will consider supporting this amendment and supporting our Constitution. Thank you for letting me talk.
Forty-eight.
I'm a joiner, 13 Jan. Ray Circle. Guns are not your problem. Criminals are your problem. You take away my guns, how am I supposed to defend myself against the criminals? From breaking into my house, or going out shopping, from breaking into my car, from grabbing my child? Tell me how you're going to take the guns away from the criminals, not the law-abiding citizens. Thank you.
Forty-nine. Number forty-nine is missing. Okay. Number fifty.
Good evening. My name is Scott Wiigner, 3109 Ridge Drive, Toono. There are more than thirty thousand gun laws on the books in the United States, thirty thousand. Not one has ever stopped a criminal. There are over four hundred thousand guns in this country. Or, I'm sorry, four hundred million guns in this country. Four hundred million guns. They're not running around killing people. People kill people. They do it with stones, shovels, hammers, knives. It's been going on since Cain and Abel. Please protect our Second Amendment and become a sanctuary city. Thank you.
Fifty-one.
Good evening. My name's Ash Thumb. Live at 230 Reflection Drive, Williamsburg. I'd like to thank the board for a moment to speak. Thank you very much. As a citizen of Virginia and James City County, I would request the board to adopt the resolution to protect all of our rights, in particular the Second Amendment. Thank you very much.
Number fifty-two.
Jane Gingrich, Ford's Colony, James City County. I would like to point out that I have seen a lot of statistical information saying that over sixty-five percent of the Americans want sensible gun legislation, and that's a number that we need to listen to. They don't, so we need to let the General Assembly of the state Commonwealth of Virginia do their searching for finding sensible gun legislation. There's one other group that nobody has really addressed, and that's our first responders. And it haunted me after some of the shootings when first responders said, because of silencers on the guns, people ran towards the shooter, not away from it. And when their first responders got to the scene, they didn't know where to go, and they were going towards, and they were not able to help the people who needed the help. And so I think our general legislation can come up with some ways. Thank you very much.
Fifty-three.
My name is Carrie Franklin, Jr., and I live at 100 Windsor Lane. I would think that nearly every person who has room believes they themselves have a good heart. I believe every person hates injustice and loss of life. That said, however, gun control will never lessen the loss of life. Historically, it only increases it. I will never surrender any weapon I own, and I will always choose dangerous freedom over peaceful slavery. I ask that you adopt the resolution.
Number fifty-four.
My name is Riley Wickner. I live at 3109 Ridge Drive, and I go to War Hill High School here in James City County. I'm seventeen years old. I have been through a countless number of lockdown drills, and I've even been in one that wasn't a drill. I'm here to say that none of the proposed bills in Richmond are going to stop any of these mass shootings, and especially not stop me from having to go through a drill that's for my safety. They are only an infringement on the constitutional right to keep and bear arms. What is the most common theme between the places that these mass shootings occur? It's that they occurred in gun-free zones. If there had been good people there with guns, many of these shootings could have been stopped, if not all of them. Please adopt the resolution to make James City County a Second Amendment sanctuary. Thank you.
Number fifty-five.
Good evening. I'm Julie Vaseville. I live at 3114 Ciderhouse Road in James City County. I'm the survivor of a military officer. I'm a mom, and I'm a grandmother. I would never take away anyone's right to legally own and use a firearm, but I will take away and fight against the right of anyone to have a firearm that is not safely stored, safely maintained, and where it can't be in the hands of children or people who may have mental issues or physical issues that they shouldn't have them. The one thing I've learned in the past few years is that active shooter drills take time away from the education that we want our children to be having, and it frightens them. I ask that you not adopt this resolution, but instead, continue, let's work together and make this a safe place.
Fifty-six.
Hi, Deborah Hill, 196 The Main, Williamsburg, Virginia, and thank you for taking this time to have our input, and I want you to know that I stand in opposition to this resolution. I'm no constitutional scholar, so I'm not going to go there, but I do know that eighty-five percent of Virginians agree with the idea of universal background checks. Seventy-five percent of Virginians agree with extreme risk protective orders. Both of those laws have been proven to be constitutional. So that's one point. The other point I would like to make is, we talked about the Williamsburg Boat Club earlier tonight. I mean, this is an area, this is a tourist destination, this is a sporting tourism destination, and I, you know, don't think people are going to be really happy about going to a gun sanctuary for their vacation time. So, very simple. Thank you for your time.
Fifty-seven.
Good evening. I'm Dr. Rocco Bassiano, 25 Frenchman's Key. I trained on the south side of Chicago for my medical training. The American College of Physicians recommends, represents many, if not most, of the internal medicine and subspecialty physicians in the United States. They have a policy paper believing that the status quo on gun control is not adequate. They would like to reduce firearm-related injuries and deaths in the United States, and principle among their recommendations is to approach firearm safety as a public health issue so that policy decisions are based on scientific evidence. As such, they strongly support universal criminal background checks to keep guns out of the hands of felons, persons with mental illnesses that put them at greater risk of harming themselves or others, people with substance abuse disorders, and others who are current regulations prohibit from owning guns. I think this should be taken into consideration.
Number fifty-eight.
Hello, my name is Tom Corbett, 3305 Mary Bird, and retired Air Force officer, resident here sixteen years, and NRA member. Thank you for your patience, first of all, for tonight. Really strongly support this resolution. We who have the right to bear arms, protect our own property, should not be told what type of weapon we use to protect our houses and our family. And I really am very concerned about the language that's being proposed. It definitely is against the Constitution, in my opinion. So, the criminals are going to get weapons, however they're going to get weapons, and this is not going to change that. So, thank you very much for your time.
I believe we have number twenty-six now. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you for hearing my plea for you to please pass this proposal. I believe that that's very important because I believe in the Constitution. Chairman Eisenhower, like you, I had more than a twenty-year military career, and it started with an oath of office to support and defend the Constitution from all enemies, foreign and domestic. The government in Richmond now, the Senate Bill 16, they know that's unconstitutional. And per my email to all of you sent on December fourth, which I'd refer you to for more detail, the case law is 2008 U.S. Supreme Court, D.C. versus Heller. It's very clear that SB 16 is unconstitutional, and there are a lot of lawyers that make up that Senate. They don't care, and that's my problem with this. Fifty-some years ago in Virginia, local and county governments were undergoing a program of massive resistance. They knew what the federal government said. They didn't care. Don't stand with them. Follow the Second Amendment. The measures in Senate Bill 16 are infringing on the U.S. Constitution, and that's important and ought to be important to all of us. So even if in Richmond, they're not going to follow it, we ought to. Thank you.
I believe we're back to number fifty-nine. Sir. Thank you.
Jim Britton, 7144 Pine Brook Road, Williamsburg. I do want to stand and encourage you to adopt the resolution that's before you tonight. We are all protected by uniformed officers on our daily basis, even in this building tonight. Guns don't kill people. People kill people. So, thank you for your consideration.
Sixty.
Hey, good evening. I'm Brian Denny. I live at 213 West Haswell's Way here in Kings Mill, and I appreciate the opportunity to speak with you this evening. I'm here today to ask you to support the Constitution of the United States and make James City County a Second Amendment sanctuary. As a professional soldier, like many in the room here, both behind the bench and out in this area, I swore an oath to the Constitution to protect and defend the Constitution of the United States against all enemies, foreign and domestic. I can't see how the law is being passed and proposed in Richmond, specifically SB 16, or anything but an attack on our constitutional rights. Our right to bear arms has been upheld by the U.S. Supreme Court and by our own Constitution here in Virginia. I realize that what I'm asking you to do takes courage, and I acknowledge that doing nothing is often a strategy, but I don't see how letting the government take the initiative and continue to move towards a proposed course of action that will tie up time in Congress, tie up time on the Hill, and prevent more appropriate action being taken in the state. When a man comes to you, a strong man with fear in his eyes, in Mosul, and he says, "I need a weapon to defend my home," you give him a weapon. All I'm asking is for that same right.
Number sixty-one.
Wayne Parker, 8802 Diasca Road. I would like to say that none of these gun control proposals that the governor and the legislature is proposing would have saved one life. What makes a criminal a criminal? He doesn't pay attention to laws. These laws are only going to affect the law-abiding citizens in America and Virginia. This, this just doesn't make any sense. The Second Amendment is not about deer hunting. It's not about duck hunting. It's not really even about self-protection. It's about protecting ourselves from a tyrannical government, and I feel, I do support the resolution. Thank you.
Sixty-two.
Sixty-two. Robert Wilson, 201 Norman Davis Drive. I am for the resolution to be passed. I would also request that you might go one step further in having a resolution to change the rather archaic Section Two of the Virginia Constitution to read something a little easier. "Unalienable right of the individual citizen of Commonwealth of Virginia to have and hold arms shall not be infringed." Very clear, shouldn't have any problem with that. The present one is rather convoluted and can be interpreted in many different ways. A rebuttal to previous person, they are concerned about firearms in schools. Of the seventeen states that allow teachers to be armed, not one incident of school shooting. Can't be said for even James City County, which did have an altercation that was non-fatal at War Hill. Thank you.
Number sixty-three.
Good evening. My name is Phil Presbus. I live in a village as a Westminster. I'll be rather brief since a lot of what I was going to say is covered. Problem with this is a lot of emotion, so you hear about data, the thirty, thirty-five thousand people a year, and I've gone on the FBI website and looked it up, die from gun, have gun deaths, but twenty-eight to thirty are suicides. So, these laws aren't going to help those people. Then we have gang violence, then you have self-defense, police killing, and then you're left with about forty-one hundred people, or 1.24 per hundred thousand, that die from a gun. And for that, you want to take away our rights. So, we have a lot of laws on the books. We need to enforce them. Also, the laws in Richmond, if you've read them, if it looks like an assault weapon, well, a reasonable person would say, capacity. What is the capacity of that weapon to do harm? Not what does it look like? So this is about emotion and feelings, and everybody's afraid. So, I just have one last thing, that our rights don't end where people's feelings begin. Thank you.
Number sixty-four.
Good evening. Trevor Hare, 2528 Campbell Close, Williamsburg, Virginia. I've lived here for fifteen years. I spent seven years active-duty military, like many other people in this room. So, reading the resolution tonight, it's not so much about the Second Amendment, which it only mentions once, as it is about an affirmation of constitutional rights and due processes. And that's really what a lot of the bills, what the three bills in the Senate are. Two of them are about the right to property, and one of them is about the right to assembly under certain conditions. Both of those are covered elsewhere than the Second Amendment. The Second simply reaffirms the purpose of some of that property and some of that assembly. This message doesn't say that we don't support background checks. I think many of us can agree on that, that the background checks could be a good thing. This law doesn't say anything about common sense gun control. I'm sure we all disagree on many of those points, but that's not what the resolution talks about. This resolution talks about constitutional rights and due process for the right to property and the right to assembly. And I ask, therefore, that you adopt this resolution to affirm James City County's supports for our rights to speak our minds and to assemble and to own our property in peace. Thank you for your time.
Sixty-five.
Keith, Uncle Russ Gibbons, 117 King William Drive. I come before you to speak in reference to the resolution and ask that you do adopt James City County as a sanctuary county. My job is to protect my business, my home, and my family, and your job is to support us in what we have to do in order to be able to take care of a successful life for ourselves. So I would ask that you represent us to the legislation in Richmond and vote James City County to be a sanctuary county. Thank you for your time.
Number sixty-six? Oh, sixty-seven? Okay.
Sixty-six. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'm John Payne, 3305 Ashview. Thank you for your service to our community, first of all. Why is this resolution on the agenda? It's a transparently political stunt. Gun lobbyists and gun lovers want to make pawns out of local governments. Guns do kill people. Bullets are flying, and our community is being ripped apart politically. Shooter's rights are protected far more than their victims' unalienable rights to peace and safety. I have lost six friends, coworkers, colleagues, and a neighbor to gun violence over the past ten years, and had another badly wounded. Guns do kill people. I ask you tonight to dismiss this political stunt and instead find ways to unite our community and bring safety to would-be victims of gun violence. Thank you.
Yeah, I believe number sixty-eight is next. Is that correct?
Thank you for hearing me. My name is Dewan McGee. I live in 1109 Lafayette Street. I disagree with the gentleman that went before me. There has never been a gun in the history of humanity that has ever gotten up and shown. There has never been a gun in the history of humanity that has ever gotten up and shot someone on its own accord. I am in support of this resolution, and I ask you to be in support of it as well. We have to make sure that we maintain our constitutional rights. Antigone appealed to a higher law, and I ask you to appeal to that higher law as well, the higher law of the Constitution, specifically the Second Amendment. Thank you.
Sixty-nine.
My name is Jan Walker, one-oh-sixth Lawn Circle. To forestall gun legislation that may be passed in the upcoming General Assembly session, gun rights advocates are encouraging Virginia localities to declare themselves Second Amendment sanctuaries. I oppose such sanctuaries, and I urge the Board to continue to uphold the Constitution in Virginia and all Virginia laws. Virginia is a democracy. In November, Virginia voters elected members of the Virginia General Assembly. In a democracy, citizens must agree to be bound by laws enacted by duly-elected representatives. We would have chaos if individuals or cities or counties decided which enacted laws to follow. The voters chose their representatives. Let those representatives vote on what gun laws to enact, and when they do, all citizens should follow those laws. Thank you.
Seventy.
My name is Joshua Mays. I live at one-thirty-five Race Field Drive up in Tuano. I actually don't want to speak on my own behalf. I'd like to speak on behalf of my mother. My mother is a disabled combat veteran, honorably served in Desert Storm. She can barely walk. And I would like to know why this county and this state want to restrict her right to defend herself in her own home. She shoots more than I do. Full disclosure, I shoot. But I would like to know why we, this is, this should not be a difficult decision. We desperately need to protect our Second Amendment right to defend ourselves and our homes. Thank you.
Seventy-one.
Hi, my name is Sasha Polly. I live at nine Darlene Lane. I believe that guns save lives. I believe that if we take the guns away from our citizens, it would actually, in fact, endanger us. I believe that if this law passes and takes away our constitutional right, which one of our rights is next to be taken away? Thank you.
Seventy-two.
Hi, my name is Sean Linforce. I live on thirty-eight fifty-eight Staffordshire Lane. And first, I'd like to thank you for letting us speak tonight. And instead of reiterating some of the other things I've heard tonight from this perspective, I want to zoom in on SB sixteen specifically. This prefiled bill is extremely overreaching, and it also describes the majority of firearms owned by Virginians. So that in mind, should it pass, then basically, there's three choices: registration, confiscation, or they become felons. Now, I don't think any of those are acceptable, and hopefully you don't either. The right to keep and bear arms, it's not a privilege, it's a right. And it's one that is enshrined by both the US and the Virginia Constitution. So, please vote yes for this resolution and show us that you support our natural rights. Thank you.
Seventy-three.
My name is Arthur Tancheck. I live at forty-nine oh eight Grand Strand Drive. I was born in Virginia. I was born with these rights that this bill is trying to take away. This is a socialist agenda. Has nothing to do with the citizens of this country. It's already predetermined what our rights are. This bill is infringing on everything in our citizenry. We're not represented by our politicians properly. I go to vote, there's no Republican to vote for. There's nobody that stands on my side as far as state politics go. Our government doesn't represent us. They want us to surrender our weapons when they can't even protect us from what's going on in the world today. I don't feel like I should have to surrender my rights to protect myself for the cowardice of others. Everybody has that same right to pick something up, arm yourself, educate yourself, carry yourself. I'm not surrendering mine. It's not fair. I hope that you represent us in a fair way. It's, all rights are pre-established. Thank you.
Number seventy-four.
Good evening, Boards of Supervisors. Ah, that's weird. My name is William Graham. I live at sixteen-hundred River Ridge, and the Second Amendment was created to, for the right to bear arms and shall not be infringed. And what is being, happening is something that is clearly being infringed on, the right to bear arms. I have a strong fear that if you, if this, if you guys are not to vote on the Second Amendment sanctuary, that the guns that criminals have aren't going to go away. The guns that I have will. I'm a law-abiding citizen, and it scares me that there are people out there that have guns that should not have them, but you guys want to take mine. It makes no sense to me. So I want you guys to think on that. Thank you very much. Have a great day.
Number seventy-five. Seventy-six?
Yes. Seventy-five isn't here.
Yeah, I've got the numbers, the names and the numbers are mixed up, so if you'll, yes.
Absolutely. My name's Ryan Celestino, one-twenty-five Wilson Circle. So, this resolution is here because of the fact that we're trying to regulate something that is the only thing that can be regulated. Knives, bats, and every other kind of weapon are used on a significant more basis for murder and for harm, but yet we want to take away the one thing that can truly deter the violence. I'm a former combat vet and even a former militia volunteer from when ISIS first broke out in Syria. And I tell you, guns are what save lives. Guns are what deter violence. And the Second Amendment is the law of the land. You guys swore an oath to the Constitution before the Constitution of Virginia and before upholding James City County. United States Constitution states shall not be infringed, and I stand by that. Thank you for letting me speak.
Number seventy-seven.
Sir.
Good evening. My name's Mark Collins, one-hundred St. George's Boulevard. This bill, I'm here to tell you, is not going to save anyone's lives. I spent over twenty-one, over twenty years as an average man in the United States Marine Corps. I still serve the government today. I do training. That's what I do. I've heard a woman in here speak about first responders. We want to put effort into something, put effort into more money for our first responders, better equipment, better training, and confidence with the right-trained people is going to stop innocent lives from being killed, not this bill. Thank you for your time.
Seventy-eight.
Good evening. My name is Randy Taylor, seven-one-one-two Church Lane. Just like to thank the Board for taking the time to hear everybody's tonight. Just like to say that I hope the Board would pass this resolution. I understand that this resolution is not law. It is not going to change the law by any means, but I believe it will send a message to Richmond. It will also send a message along with the rest of the counties in the state that are passing Second Amendment resolutions, that the small majority, I guess, of northern Virginia and the northern counties of this state are not ruling the rest of this state. Thank you, and I hope you pass this resolution.
Number seventy-nine.
Evening. My name is Brian Scott Simpers. I live at five-nine-eight-three Centerville Road. I'm here to support you voting in favor of making James City County a Second Amendment sanctuary. I have taught in living history museums all up and down the East Coast. I have taught in schools, and I have taught enough history to know that these sorts of things start small and they get big. And the proposals that the Virginia State Legislature has already on the books for some of these laws are tyrannical, they are unethical, they are disingenuous, and they are meant to take power away from common citizens and put it in the hands of the government. You folks, right here, right now, have an opportunity to take a non-offensive measure and to say that James City County is a Second Amendment sanctuary county. You will join over forty-one other counties in this great state in support of basic fundamental constitutional rights. Thank you.
Number eighty.
I'm Michael Pollard, fifteen-oh-four Trudy Lane. I am an Air Force veteran, former James City County Police Officer, former VPRJ Corrections Officer. I, myself, have sworn to defend and uphold the Constitution of the United States against all enemies, foreign and domestic. I have taken an oath to defend this country, just as everybody here who has a badge on, as well as you who are sitting behind a desk. I know that the Second Amendment is not just for hunting, as a lot of people assume, is for the defense of all homes against all enemies, including home invaders, terrorists, and any other people that do not belong in this country. If we can become a sanctuary state for refugees who do not belong in this country, we can become a sanctuary county for all those who will use their firearms to defend their families as they are used. Thank you.
Number eighty-one.
My name is Kenneth Murphy, Kenneth Murphy, two-eight-eight-four Hinley Drive. I wish you guys could see what was going on outside while this meeting was going on. I asked an officer, have you ever seen an overflow crowd for a meeting, like a meeting, a superintendent's meeting, supervisor's meeting? And he said, "No." And I said, "How many people do you think are out here?" He said, "Four or five hundred." The vast majority of the people outside had the sticker on. The vast majority of the people outside, who couldn't even get in here, want you to pass this amendment. Wish you could have seen that. I also wish, if you haven't already, you would take time to read the Golike Archipelago book by Alexander Solzhenitsyn, which spells out in great detail what a tyrannical government can do. And we want to avoid that. So, please defend your, respect your oath to defend the Constitution, including the Second Amendment.
Brady two.
Tony Martin, Chico Hammy Haven. I'm here to ask the Board to please pass to make James City County a Second Amendment sanctuary county. We need to let Richmond know that you can't come in and just totally turn our lives upside down. I realize that they were put in there by the majority vote, but that majority is such a small pocket. And truly, as was just mentioned, the crowd outside does not represent our values and our beliefs. Thank you very much.
Number eighty-three.
Katie Abercrombie, five-oh-two West Gate Circle. I've been born and raised here, and I have grown up hunting in the woods. And hunting's also taught me discipline, guidance, leadership, that I've grown from, known from my grandfather. Now I'm a real estate agent locally, and I need my rights because I need to be protected during my job. Houses are, like the sheriff said, forty minutes away, and I will be stuck out there. So, please keep our rights.
Number eighty-four.
Evening. Thank you for your time, ladies and gentlemen. My name's RJ Glazer. I may be one of the only original Williamsburgans you're going to see tonight, because my family has lived in this town for over two-hundred-and-forty years. My people fought with the French under Gates for the rights that we all have and are trying to protect. I'm third-generation Army. My grandfather went, was in France in World War One. My father landed at Omaha Beach, and I did my time in the airborne. But then growing up in this town, in Williamsburg, one thing that I've noticed in my time as growing up, and, I mean, we operated under far less rules than they have today for guns, and there weren't the problems that you see today. Why? For the things that you cannot legislate: family, values, Christian values, and respect.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Number eighty-five.
Good evening. Dina Waltrip, Lake Powell Road, lifetime resident, and I will probably die here with the rest of my family. As probably most of the people in here, and like the ones out front, we all went to school together. We had guns in our cars and our trucks. There was no mass shootings. We abided by the law. If a cop pulls you over, you stop. You protect the law, you abide by it. We have rights, and to just think that y'all would not want us to have the right and to be a sanctuary state, just, it scares a lot of us. Because we still are a small town, no matter how big it's grown, but we want to keep those small-town values, and to keep an eye on each other and have each other's backs. And I just hope that you do pass this. Thank you.
Eighty-six.
Yes, good evening. My name is James Gelfand, ten-ten Kings Mill Way. As a victim of gun violence back in nineteen eighty-five, I carry the scars both physically and emotionally. I have an expectation, as do the hundreds of people standing outside, that you guys do the right thing, defend the Constitution, and defend my rights to protect myself and my family. Don't do the wrong thing, okay? Thank you.
Number eighty-seven.
Cindy Gibson, four-seven-nine-two Bristol Circle, Williamsburg. I'd just first like to say thank you to the James City County staff that has done an excellent job organizing all the crowds inside, outside. They've done a wonderful job, and so has the James City County Police. They've been excellent. So, apart from that, I just want to say my opposition to the gun sanctuary resolution. Among the other issues that everyone's brought up, I think that, as I used to come here as a tourist, and I would never want to come here if I knew that this was a gun sanctuary city, and I would never want to buy a house here as well. That's it. Thank you very much.
Number eighty-eight.
Hello, my name is Jim Prince. I live at three-eleven Patriot Way, Yorktown, Virginia, and James City County fairly often. Love Pierce's Barbecue and Outlets. Thank you for letting me speak. I'm a strong supporter of the Second Amendment. I've spoken to the Board of Supervisors before about that, and I ask that you support your sheriff, who is a supporter of the Second Amendment. My sheriff down in York County also is a good supporter of the Second Amendment. And I'd like to make the observation that this isn't really a Democrat/Republican issue. This is something that they, the people that won the election ran with gun control. They think they have a mandate. By forty-nine counties, hopefully fifty counties, you know, proposing this legislation that, you know, this amendment or this resolution, whatever it's called, you're letting the state legislators know that guns are not the issue they want to tread on. I think that any, any county that doesn't pass a resolution like this, I will not do business at. Thank you.
That is the end of our list. I would like to extend my sincere appreciation to everyone in the audience for making this a very civil and very orderly process. It is, I'm impressed. You guys, you guys have impressed us tonight, so thank you for everything you've done. We will now move from public comment to our board consideration, and I will look to Ms. Sadler.
Yes, thank you. Thank you all for being here this evening. The resolution before us this evening reads as follows: Reaffirming James City County's commitment to the Constitutions of the United States and the Commonwealth of Virginia. Whereas the structures and limitations of government are expressed in the Constitution of the United States of America, the US Constitution, and the Virginia Constitution, and amendments thereto; and whereas the Board of Supervisors of James City County, Virginia, the Board, has only those powers granted to it by the General Assembly and Article Seven of the Virginia Constitution; and whereas the General Assembly is required to uphold the Constitutions of the United States and the Commonwealth of Virginia; and whereas the federal and state judiciary have exclusive jurisdiction pursuant to Article Three of the US Constitution and Article Six of the Virginia Constitution to determine the constitutionality of laws passed by the respective legislatures. Now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Supervisors of James City County, Virginia, respects the structures and limitations of government as expressed in the US Constitution and Virginia Constitution. Be it further resolved that the Board has full faith that the division of powers expressed in Articles One, Two, and Three of the US Constitution and Articles Three, Four, Five, and Six of the Virginia Constitution shall continue to operate to prevent any laws that infringe upon the rights guaranteed to the people. Be it further resolved that the Board urges the General Assembly not to pass any legislation that would infringe upon the rights of the citizens of the county, including but not limited to the Second Amendment. Be it further resolved by the Board that James City County, the county, shall not administer or enforce any law that is adjudicated by an appropriate court to violate either the US Constitution or Virginia Constitution. Be it further resolved that by virtue of their oaths of office, the Board fully supports both the US and Virginia Constitutions and the rule of law. And be it further resolved that the Board... that the Board directs the county attorney to forward a copy of this resolution to the county's elected representatives in the Virginia General Assembly.
Mr. Chairman, I move this into a vote. Um, we have a motion on the floor. Mr. Stevens, would you call the roll?
Mr. Hippel?
Aye.
Mr. McGlynn?
Aye.
Ms. Sadler?
Aye.
Ms. Larson?
Aye.
Mr. Eisenhour?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Okay, I will, uh, look to any board member who would like to make any comment before we pass out of their, uh, our, our board consideration.
I can start off. I'd like to thank all the citizens who've come out today, and, uh, we always like to have a full board room. Like to thank each one of you for sending the emails and information to us and putting your best foot forward, and also how we acted in here tonight. I want to thank you, each one of you, for what you've done and how you've supported this board in James City County. And I remember that we're always a small community. We'll always be a small community, and, and we trust and watch out after our neighbors and take care of each one of us. So, keep that up, and thank you, and, and keep supporting the board and, and James City County. Thank you.
I didn't know your fan club was out there.
Uh, I just would like to thank everyone as well for, um, for coming out this evening and, um, showing respect to one another. I hope that no one ever, I, I, I think in this day and time, often patriotism is questioned when someone stands up for another side other than the one that you believe in. And I don't believe that to be true at all. I think that everyone in this room has, is a true person of patriotism, and I hope that, that we will remember that about both sides. What I would urge you to do is to take this passion to Richmond, because that is where the decision is going to be made, and that is, that those are the people that are resp- several speakers this evening responded to us taking away something or adding to something. It is not within our purview. So, I would just urge you, whichever side of this, um, issue that you're on, to, um, to take it up to Richmond. Thank you.
Go ahead. I'd like to go last. That's okay.
Sure, absolutely. John, would you care?
Well, uh, let me, let me just make a couple of points. The first is that the action we took tonight was not to declare James City County a san- sanctuary county. It was to simply restate what our oath of office requires us to do, to reflect the fact that we are here to make sure that laws are enforced, and that if there are disagreements over the constitutionality of laws, we are not the basis on which those issues will be resolved. They will go to the judiciary. We heard a lot of discussion tonight about, uh, not wanting us to pass a particular law. Uh, there are laws that have, or there have been proposed laws, uh, introduced in Richmond, but many of them, uh, will never see the light of day. We know that there are laws that are in place in Virginia that, uh, are related to, uh, gun, uh, regulation. We also know that there are a number of laws that have been enacted in other states that have met the constitutional barriers. I've had to sit here in a number of instances and vote for changes in our ordinances because the General Assembly has taken action about our ability to regulate where and when guns can be brought into public buildings and spaces. Uh, I don't always agree with those factors, but once the General Assembly has acted and once they have done so in a constitutional manner, it's my responsibility to uphold the law. I think the most important things we've done today is recognize that we all understand the appropriate limitations on local government and what we're doing, uh, and that, uh, as we, uh, debate issues that are of great importance and interest to so many citizens, we recognize that the last thing we want to do is to put our county's public safety officers in the middle of disputes over public policy questions. Uh, so, uh, I think it is important for us to recognize what we have and have not done tonight, uh, whether we had adopted this resolution or not. This is exactly what I think we would have to do based on our oath of office, uh, not to support or oppose a particular piece of legislation, but rather to act within the boundaries of the Constitution.
Uh, I'd like to thank everybody, um, like again, for the, the civil discourse this evening, and I would really like to thank my fellow board members, because, uh, over the last few days, this has been a very, uh, interesting effort to collaborate, uh, with each other and come up with a, a resolution that we could support, that we felt would adequately address the issue. I think what struck me in reading all of the emails, and there were considerable number of emails that I read, um, and if I didn't get a response back to you, I'm sorry, I just got overwhelmed. Many citizens want us to vow that we would not enforce measures that they think are unconstitutional. And I can understand that passion. I understand that very clearly. The problem, as Dr. McGlynn has pointed out, is that we are constrained. We have to abide by the law that says that the courts get to make that determination, and then we have to enforce what is determined to be constitutional. So, as Ms. Larson said, uh, the next step, and the place I would urge you to take your efforts, is to Richmond, because, uh, I've already done so. There are some aspects of some of these laws that I don't like, and I've already spoken to my legislators. Um, and I hope some of them don't see the light of day, and I hope that what does come out is, is reasonable and can be supported. So, uh, I, again, I want to thank you all for, um, the, making it a, what could have been a really chore to be actually a relatively productive evening, I think, um, and thanks so much.
Well, I'd just like to thank the board as well for, um, working so well together to come up with a message that we can send to Richmond, that we do, um, support the Constitution of the United, United States, the Constitution of the Commonwealth of Virginia, and that we're sending a message saying that we do support the Second Amendment, which is part of that Constitution, and that we expect our rights not to be infringed upon. And with that, thank you all for your emails, your phone calls. I've gotten to know so many people over the past couple of weeks, and it's been an amazing , uh, journey to get this message sent out to everyone. Now, I would like to, to, um, say a couple of things. I know that, um, just FYI, I heard from quite a few pastors in the emails that I received saying, please support the Constitution, please support this resolution. They were in favor of it. They are Second Amendment believers. I also heard, um, mention this evening that this, uh, this is meaningless here tonight. I can assure you, based on the oath of office I've sworn to uphold, this is not meaningless. This is very important, and this is the message that we hope to send to Richmond. I would thank you all for being, uh, being here tonight. Please be safe going home. Thank you for being courteous, and I am supporter. Thank you for being here. Good night. Mr. Chairman, can we have a brief recess, please?
We're going to recess for about five minutes to allow the room to clear as much as you'd like, and anybody who wants to stay can. Lead with the next agenda item, which is our consent calendar. Uh, we have, Lord, how many? Sixteen items. Number one is appointment of assistant fire marshal. Number two, adoption of James City County Emergency Operations Plan for twenty-nineteen. Number three, compensation plan and personnel policies agreement with the sheriff. Number four, appropriation City of Williamsburg Child Health Initiative for ten thousand and six dollars. Number five, contract award, fourteen in-car camera systems, one-hundred-and-twenty-five-thousand five-hundred-and-thirty-two dollars. Number six, grant award, integrated care training, ten thousand dollars. Number seven, grant award, Virginia DEQ FY-20 litter grant, ten thousand nine-hundred-and-ninety-eight dollars. Number eight, grant award, uh, naloxone for law enforcement, two thousand and twenty-five dollars. Number nine, grant award, scattered site housing rehabilitation, community development block grant, one million two-hundred-and-eight-thousand seven-hundred-and-seventy-one. Number ten, scattered site housing rehabilitation, community development block grant application, adoption of required housing rehabilitation program design and residential anti-displacement and relocation plan. Number eleven, scattered site housing rehabilitation, community development block grant application, adoption of required Section five-oh-four grievance procedure for disability nondiscrimination. Number twelve, scattered site housing rehabilitation, community development block grant application, adoption of required local business and employment plan. Number thirteen, scattered site housing rehabilitation, community development block grant application, adoption of required fair housing certification. Number fourteen, contract award, Columbia Drive Restoration Project, one-hundred-and-seventy-four-thousand four-hundred-and-fifty. Number fifteen, contract award, Woodland Farm Phase Two Stream Restoration, one million three-hundred-and-eighty-nine-thousand nine-hundred-and-sixty-eight dollars. And number sixteen, abandonment of a portion of Jolly Pond Road. That is the consent agenda. Does anyone wish to pull any items?
I would just like to pull the appointment of the assistant fire marshal.
Okay. Do, we will pull that?
But I'll, I'll move everything else.
Okay, you'll move everything else. So, we have a motion. Mr. Stevens, call the roll.
Ms. Sadler?
Aye.
Ms. Larson?
Aye.
Mr. McGlynn?
Aye.
Mr. Hippel?
Aye.
Ms. Eisenhour?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Okay, appointment of assistant fire marshal. You would care to speak?
I, I pulled that because I would just like, um, Chief Ash to, is the person here? You could introduce them. Thank you.
Good evening, how are you guys? Um, so, before this evening, there's a resolution to appoint Assistant Fire Marshal Chuck Satterfield. And Chuck's with us today. He's completed all of his requirements for inspector, investigator, and completed the Basic Law Enforcement Academy through the State Fire Marshal's Office.
Great. Thank you. Thank you. I just wanted an opportunity to thank you and to congratulate you.
Thank you.
And, um, unfortunately, know firsthand how important fire marshals are, and so, um, I appreciate you taking on the role and Chief, you, um, working to get us another one. So, with that, I move pass of that on the consent agenda.
We have, um, a motion to, um, appoint the assistant fire marshal. Mr. Stevens, call the roll.
Ms. Larson?
Aye.
Mr. Hippel?
Aye.
Ms. Sadler?
Aye.
Mr. McGlynn?
Aye.
Mr. Eisenhour?
Aye.
Motion carries.
All right, we are now down to public hearings. Our public commission, our Planning Commission representative tonight is Danny Schmidt. So, I recognize him in the audience. Um, we will start with our public hearing, number one, SUP nineteen-dash-zero-zero-one-nine five-three-oh, Neckeland Road Tourist Home. Mr. Scott White will do the presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. Mrs. Emily Huffman has applied for a special use permit to allow for the operation of two tourist home dwellings with a total of four tourist home units located at five-thirty Neckeland Road. The property is owned R-eight Rural Residential and is designated low-density residential in the comprehensive plan and is located inside the primary service area. This SUP, if granted, would allow rentals throughout the year. Staff considers the home's location, parking provisions, and appearance to be favorable factors in the evaluation of this application. The front dwelling has been operating as a residence and accessory apartment, and the back dwelling is a duplex which received a variance in nineteen ninety, or nineteen-eighty-five to be constructed. Ample parking is provided with a circular drive in the front and a parking area between the residence and the duplex. Staff is recommending conditions which are intended to mitigate the impacts of the use and preserve the residential character of the home. Such conditions include restrictions on commercial signage and lighting, and any future expansions of this use would require an SUP amendment. Staff finds the proposal, the proposal to be compatible with the two-thousand-thirty-five comprehensive plan, the zoning ordinance, and surrounding development, and recommends that the Board of Supervisors approve this application, subject to the conditions included in the packet. At the November sixth, two-thousand-and-nineteen Planning Commission meeting, the Commission voted to deny the application by a vote of four to two. And at this time, I'd be happy to answer any questions for you, and we also have, uh, both my applicants in, in the presence.
Not this time. Me.
Um, we, uh, will ask Mr. Schmidt to come up and give us the Planning Commission summary.
Evening, Mr. Chairman and the board. At our November meeting, the Planning Commission had a split vote in favor of not recommending this special use permit, uh, for approval, and the vote was four to two. There were no public speakers during this hearing. Those who voted not to recommend the SUP cited the fact that this proposed site was not on a collector or a tieral road, but rather it was on a local road. And in the recent past, those homes we've approved as tourist homes have not been on local roads. You will likely recall the majority of the recent cases have been off of Ironbound Road. Another concern was that if these units, which have been serving as long-term rentals, were to come off the market and become tourist homes, the thought was we would be doing a disservice to the county's greater need for affordable auxiliary housing units in our area. Furthermore, one commissioner stated that they did not believe short-term rentals were consistent with the goals of the comprehensive plan, citing that the comprehensive plan specifically calls for supporting existing businesses involved in the tourist industry. Finally, a commissioner who voted in favor of the applicant did mention that they believed this was a good site for short-term rentals because of its proximity to several historic sites and the Colonial Parkway. And that is all I have, and if you have any questions?
Questions for Mr. Schmidt?
It's time.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we will open the public hearing, and I have two cards. Number one is, uh, Mr. Huffman, who's the applicant. Who should speak? Or just available for questions?
Available for questions.
Okay. Are there any questions for Mr. Huffman? Thank you. I have, uh, one other speaker, and that is Sharon Dennis.
Sharon Dennis, one-hundred St. George's Boulevard, Williamsburg. Hi, everyone. Back. So, what I wanted to speak to is let you know how mine is going, because you so graciously approved my home on Ironbound. Um, and I'm listening to a lot of the concerns. So, uh, I'm listening to low-income housing, and I do want you to know that I had a daycare center, and I, you might recall that was quashed, very sadly, because I loved working with the children, the community, and I did the real job. Whereas many people are concerned about low-income housing, I provided, I provided jobs, childcare, training, homes, medical. I did it all. So, I really know what the needs are, and I have serviced those. Well, now I'm getting a little break, and I love what I'm doing. It's the short-term rental. And what that did for me was that building that would have been trashed and taken down. So, we want, number one, to show what Williamsburg used to be like. Well, you might be aware that a lot of the cute little homes are getting razed, and they're putting up these big boxes. I'm trying to renovate junkers and make them look beautiful, but to do that, you have to have money. It's amazing, because I was a single mother, homeless. I don't know how I did what I've already done with no money, but I physically fixed these places up, and they look beautiful. So, now I get to share it, and all the people that come to visit, they love it. They don't want the timeshare. They don't want the hotel experience. They want to see what Williamsburg is like. So, what I'm finding is, it's a wonderful next business for me. It's provided, um, wonderful experiences for those who visit us. We get to pay, uh, taxes, and the money that I make, well, I'm not going to get rich off of it, but it does allow something that I didn't have before, and that's to renovate and fix it up and make it beautiful, and I'm going to continue to do that. So, instead of taking the property apart, because when I got it, it was a junker, and I made it beautiful. So, I see the, um, short-term rental as providing several services that should be of, uh, great relief. So, number one, you're giving a good experience to those people that are visiting. As for low-income housing, I, I am concerned about that too, because I was homeless. Some of this property that I have was considered low-income housing, but I had to fix it up. I would tell you, this is probably not the best way to get low-income housing, because people who don't make a lot of money, they get these junkers, they can't keep them up. There's other ways to provide that service. I think we need to explore that. I'd love to help. Now, as far as this particular, uh, business I'm now doing, it also provides those who don't, uh, who have low incomes, a job. So, I'm also creating something where they can make a lot more money per hour for cleaning and different services, and twenty dollars an hour approximately. So, there's many benefits that this new, um, entity coming in is able to do, and we can discuss that at another time, but I'd like to encourage you to think of it as a positive, not a negative, and, um, enhancing Williamsburg and the experience for both the residents as well- the residents as well as the vacation stairs. It's not really vacation, but... And if you have any questions, since I'm already doing it, ask away.
We have no other cards, so I will close the public hearing and look to the board for discussion or any further questions.
I have a...I'll lead off. I have a few. I think one thing with, you know, most of the time, we listen to neighbors surrounding the property and that sort of thing, and I see no speakers at the Planning Commission and no speakers here that are against this or have concerns with this project. The affordable housing issue that was brought up in the Planning Commission, I have a hard time with that, because what is affordable? And is this affordable? Is this not affordable? And I don't think it's our position to determine whether one of our citizens, since you have an affordable house there, it'll always have to be affordable. And you can't fix it up and make it a better house, because it's an affordable house. So I think it's stepping out of our boundaries a little bit there as far as telling the citizens what they may or may not be able to consider their house or fix it up to be something different. And I'm always for an owner that has an opportunity to use their property as long as it fits in with what we're doing and be able to use their property in order to enhance their living. And will also put something in the property that will enhance our taxing ability as well, because it's going to bring the property up. So, you know, that's a, to me, a win-win. And then not being on a main arterial road, I can understand that to a point, but sometimes people like to go somewhere different and not be on a main road and go to a piece of property that's kind of hidden or back off the woods or, you know, somewhere they can feel like they're real close to town, but they're hidden a little bit. And that's kind of a nice little feature for a lot of people that travel here that are in bigger cities that look at this and go, you know, I want to come here for this unique experience, but I don't necessarily want to be on Route sixty. I may want to be on a smaller road somewhere. And I think we've got to look at that as far as what we're doing, as far as planning and all. I see staff has, you know, said there's...he sees nothing about this that worries them on what we're...what the owners of the property want to do with this. So I see there's a lot of pluses. I think the Planning Commission gives a lot of good feedback to us and helps us with decisions we make and their direction and vetting this ahead of us. So I appreciate, you know, what the Planning Commission does and how they work to kind of vet this out before it gets to us. But I think some of those items on this one, you know, to me are a little different than, you know, some of them in the past. So that's my two cents.
So I'll go ahead and make a couple of comments, if you don't mind. I did have an opportunity to speak to the applicants last week, and in the course of that conversation, I expressed some concerns about the location of this particular site, the question of affordable housing, something we did talk about a little bit. But I guess my major concern is just not knowing what kind of impact this would have on the residential neighborhoods along Neckeland Road. And at that point, we did discuss the possibility of reducing the SUP to two units. And as I understand it, the applicants, if we did approve a reduced application, it would be for the three-bedroom house plus apartment as opposed to the duplex that is located in the rear of the property. The applicants had indicated that they would not be averse to that if that was the best way for them to proceed on this matter. I...my inclination is to support an application, but a reduced application. And recognizing that, again, as the applicant indicated, that they wouldn't find it to be a real hardship to go ahead and start off on this business with the two units and then in a few years come back if it was working well, and we thought it was working well, to apply for the other units.
They were agreeable to that?
They were agreeable to that. Yes. And we could certainly ask...
It doesn't close the door to them coming back later?
That's correct. That's correct. That's correct. But it also doesn't guarantee the approval at a later date either. It just says that they would have...that they would write...and maybe, Mr. and Ms. Huffman, would you care to just respond to that? Come on up to the podium.
If I'm not coming up to the podium, please. Everybody can see your face.
How's everybody doing? Merry Christmas.
If you wouldn't mind just introducing yourself, so everybody in the television audience can know who you are.
Yeah. My name is Wilson Huffman. I live over at five thirty Neckeland Road, and we are trying to switch our business model from long-term rentals to short-term rentals. I know I've spoken to a few of you now. I don't want to, you know, bore you with everything, but I know there's concerns. I know low-income housing is a concern. I don't necessarily believe in it a hundred percent, but I know it's a concern. So I think us doing half now with the possibility of half later is a compromise, and I think it's a relatively fair compromise. So if that's the way the board wants to go, I'm okay with it.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
So, sure. I do want to say that I did speak to Mrs. Huffman, the applicant, and at that time, I did express concern over the number of units, and I still have that concern. So it's exactly what has already been said. I just...I think that's a lot of units to put on a road. I hear you. But I think until we were to know the impact, and I don't know that the neighbors are fully aware, and so I think they...we also need to see what kind of impacts it has on this surrounding neighborhoods.
If...if no...
I was just going to comment. I had a chance to meet with the Huffmans as well, and I understand very clearly their desires, because it's long-term rentals. You don't make as much money on it. You have more legal obligations and stuff as the short-term rentals. It's probably more productive for you from a cash standpoint. So I understand the business model you're looking at. The concerns I have are not so much the affordable housing aspect, although these are typical units that would be reasonably priced, and it's probably part of the reason why you'd rather have short-term, because you can get more money out of it. So what I'm more concerned about is the not being on the arterial or collector road. And it's...the problem, I think, is we don't have a really good handle on our...on a policy on how we want to handle these short-term rentals in the long haul, because my concern is the potential adverse impact that some people in the residential community might feel haven't come out, because they're not aware of it. And, you know, I've found that in some of our communities, like in Ford's Colony where I live, and it's...the covenants don't allow you to do it, and people do it anyway, it really upsets a lot of the neighbors. So there's some real concerns. I think we've got to take a look, probably next year, at our policy on this to make sure that we are fairly consistent. And my big concern is making sure we do not have an adverse impact on what I would call introducing a commercial aspect into a residential community. And so that's the concern I have. Now, I'm glad to see that they'll come back to two versus four. And I guess the question for the county attorney is that an SUP like this, when it's approved for those two, is permanent until it comes in and asks for another change. There is no quote renewal date or update date or anything on it.
That's correct, unless there was a violation of the SUP, in which case the board could take an action.
But as long as the SUP conditions are met, it goes in perpetuity with the land.
That's correct. The SUP follows the land, not the owner.
Okay. And so, you know, when we do this, recognize we are making a permanent decision. And my discomfort is we're making a permanent decision without really having a good handle on what we want the policy to be. So I don't...I'm not sure whether I could support it or not, but I do appreciate the opportunity to reduce the impact. But I would say going forward, I would really like to see us tackle this issue from a ordinance standpoint next year.
Yeah. I appreciate that concern, Mr. Dyson. I've had the same kind of concerns. There are a couple of mitigating factors here that I think are important. And I think Mr. Schmidt, in his role on the Planning Commission, actually supported this application and made the point...one of the points that I think really we should give the applicant some credit for is that they are trying to do things according to the regulations that we've put in place for short-term rentals. And we know that there are many short-term rentals occurring in the county that are not abiding by those regulations. And so I think that they do deserve credit for wanting to do this the right way. The other aspect of it, because I think that goes some distance, but not all the way, is the nature of Neckeland Road. This is not an interior subdivision. This is a house that faces onto Neckeland that goes...it is, in a sense, it's a sort of mini-collector road for that area, for a number of housing developments along that area. It faces directly onto Neckeland Road. And so I'd be much more concerned if this were, say, in Gate House Farms or within the boundaries of Pelix Point or Powhatan Shores. But this is right on Neckeland Road and wouldn't therefore have the same kind of impact within an interior subdivision off of a collector road. So for that...for those reasons, I'd like to move the alternate resolution that was provided to us, providing for the two units. I'd ask staff to see if they could put something together, consultation with the applicants. And I would move that tonight.
We have a motion. Is any further discussion?
I just want to make sure we're clear. So you're moving to support it with the reduced...
The reduced, the two units as opposed to the...
It's the one that has the yellow at the top of your thing.
Right. And it would be the house that's right on Neckeland Road plus the accessory apartment that's part of that house as opposed to the duplex which would be behind it.
Okay. Any other discussion?
Yes, sir.
Stevens, we have a motion. Call the roll, please.
Mr. McGlynn.
Aye.
Mr. Hippel.
Aye.
Ms. Sadler.
Aye.
Ms. Larson.
Aye.
Mr. Dyson.
Aye.
Okay. Okay. We move next to our Z nineteen dash zero zero fourteen slash MP nineteen dash zero zero sixteen, the promenade at John Tyler Highway, proffer and master plan amendment. Mr. Rubero.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of the Board of Supervisors. It is my understanding that the applicant has requested that consideration of this application be deferred to the first regular board meeting in January of 2020. Staff is in support of this request.
Questions?
I can support that.
So with the consent of the board, we don't need a vote for that or...
Mr. Dyson, you'll need to open the public hearing and then continue it to the board's meeting.
Thank you for the reminder. Okay. We will open the public hearing, and I don't have any...do I have any cards on it? Does Mr. Getty wish us to speak? Okay. And we will close the public hearing.
No, you keep it open.
Oh, I'm sorry.
You'll keep it.
We will keep it open until January fourteenth meeting. Long night. Okay. And I guess we need to have a...you have to have a vote on that or...
Yes, sir. That's fine.
Consent of the group. Okay. Thank you. All right. That takes care of our second public hearing. Our third, Z nineteen dash zero zero one two slash SUP nineteen dash zero zero two zero, Forest Heights Resoning and Independent Living Facility. Mr. Dyson.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and good evening to the board. The county is proposing to rezone forty-seven point one acres of the Forest Heights area from mixed-use with proffers to the R three residential redevelopment district and the residential redevelopment district with proffers. Accompanying this proposal, Mr. Doug Harbin of Wayne Harbin Builders is proposing forty-six townhouses in a fifty-unit, age-restricted, independent living facility via special use permit, all proffered as affordable housing, to be located on the eleven point four-two acre property currently owned by the Salvation Army and addressed six zero one five Richmond Road. The Forest Heights area is designated low-density residential and moderate-density residential on the two thousand thirty-five comprehensive plan land use map. This area is located inside the primary service area, and the portion of Richmond Road that abuts this property is designated as a community-character corridor within that same plan. The layout of this proposal is nearly identical to that which was proposed at your June meeting, except the applicant has replaced the self-storage facility with an independent living facility. At the regular meeting in November, the Planning Commission concurred with staff's recommendation of approval and unanimously recommended approval of the rezoning and special use permit with their respective proffers and conditions. I will be happy to answer any questions that you may have, and the applicant is available to answer questions as well. Thank you.
Questions for staff?
I'll just ask a question for the benefit of our citizens who may be watching. Right. That what's happened in this particular instance is we've replaced the proposal for storage units that would have been at the front of this, because it would have been a mixed-use development for the independent living units for seniors, for those fifty-five years of age and older, that would help us to meet the need of independent living facilities for older citizens. I don't think fifty-five is old, but not...
It's all relative, isn't it?
Absolutely. Absolutely.
That's correct.
Is that...that's correct?
Yes.
And the board initiated this rezoning request?
Yes.
Yeah. Thank you.
All right. No further questions for staff. We'll call up Mr. Schmidt again from the Planning Commission.
And again, Mr. Chairman and the board. So while this case did culminate in a unanimous vote by the commissioners in favor of rezoning and the special use permit, we did hear from ten speakers total who communicated a mix of support and concern for the proposed changes. We heard from three residents of Forest Heights Road who voiced their concerns with the rezoning and the changes it would bring. The concerns from the residents largely centered around traffic issues on what they say is already a restrictive road, that's Forest Heights Road, especially towards the end where currently large vehicles such as delivery trucks and garbage trucks struggle to turn around. Those in support highlighted that the proposed affordable housing, as well as the affordable independent living facility that John just mentioned, were both needed in our community. Several speakers also spoke in favor because they wanted the land changes to take place and that the local Salvation Army chapter, the current landowner, would be able to sell the land and continue on with their mission and better financial standing. Discussions among the commissioners centered on the small pocket park near Richmond Road and in particular on the landscaping plan of that park and what the use of the park would ultimately be. One commissioner expressed hope for a playground at the site, but stressed the potential for conflict over the use of the playground between the established community and the newer dwellings if this project comes to pass. A need for a bus stop on Richmond Road next to this proposed development was also stressed by the commissioners due to the likelihood that many in the independent living facility might need to count on public transport at times, as well as the belief that the same may hold true for some of the residents who move into the affordable dwellings. While the commissioners did approve the application unanimously, they did stress that James City County staff develop a landscaping plan for that pocket park as well as look into considering the playground. And that is it. I have spoken.
Questions for Mr. Schmidt? Thank you for that, especially because that was the same concerns that I was talking to Mr. Holt about earlier, about that piece of property that the county has. And I think that doing the landscaping buffer is...will be on the new property right across will really enhance that entrance. But the bus stop is, I think, is a real high priority for us, so we'll have to try to keep pressing on that.
With a bench.
Yes, so...I like a bus stop with a shelter.
Mm-hmm. Heat as much.
Something.
All right. Thank you.
Okay. We will open the public hearing, and we have Mr. Vernon Getty.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, I'm Vernon Getty. Mr. Chairman, members of the board, I'm Vernon Getty. It's my pleasure to be here tonight representing Wayne Harbin Builder, Doug Harbin's here and his brother Brad. You know the Harbins at this point. Family-owned business, they've been in the county for years and, um, do a wonderful job. Familiar with the property, it's owned by the Salvation Army, as was mentioned, and they have decided not to locate here and are selling the property. So this, an approval here would allow that sale to go through and provide them funds to continue their good works in the community. Um, the townhouse portion of this project is basically not changed from what you saw in the prior application. Uh, the new piece is the senior living fifty-unit, um, affordable project. Um, it is proffered to be that rents would be in the thirty to sixty percent of AMI range, lowest of the tiers of affordable housing, and it is age-restricted by proffer as well. Uh, the Harbins are working with Bay Aging on this part of the development, and I suspect you're familiar with Bay Aging. It's a wonderful agency based in the middle peninsula, but they own and operate a similar project here in the county called Parker View on Ironbound Road that I think has been extremely successful. Um, this is the new facility here. Um, the entrance would be basically the same as before, right in here, um, access provided to the adjacent property. I would note on Forest Heights Road, um, the large trucks and the like that are now having trouble turning around will actually be able to make a loop and make that movement much easier and smoother for the folks that are living there. See again the new facility and its parking. This is actually a new stormwater management feature here, so there's less impervious cover with this than there would have been with the, um, mini-storage proposal. Uh, this just shows the buffers and open space in the project. With your new proffer ordinance, the applicant has elected to offer proffers under that new ordinance, um, most of which you saw in the prior application. A couple new ones is they proffered the extensive use of better site design, low-impact development, uh, techniques, indoor, um, earthcraft or LEED certification, a green building certification for the buildings. Uh, we obviously agree with the staff and, um, unanimous Planning Commission recommendations of approval. Uh, and I'd like to really take an opportunity, first to thank you guys, um, but and your staff as well for the, working with us on this. The mixed-use zoning worked great in the initial redevelopment of Forest Heights, and it, county did a great job with that, but this R three zoning that you've initiated really will allow it to develop out in a, a better way, and we're happy to be able to tag along with that. We think it is consistent with the comprehensive plan and does meet a pressing need in the county for affordable workforce housing, and particularly for low-income seniors. Demographics here, there's, there's just a pressing need for that. Um, no adverse impacts on surrounding development and zoning, no traffic issues. It's consistent with parks and recreation guidelines, pedestrian connectivity, no cultural or environmental issues. Um, the applicant is offering cash proffers, um, and meets the adequate public school facility test, and as I mentioned, will help the Salvation Army continue their good work. And while there's no perfect project, we think this is certainly one that merits an approval, and be glad to answer questions, but would urge you to approve this project. Thank you.
Getty? You're good, no questions?
That doesn't happen very often.
That's right. Okay, uh, we have no other public speakers, so we will close the public hearing, and I will look to the board for a motion of discussion. Motion, oh, you wanna make the motion?
Um, I will, I just wanna say real quickly, thank you, uh, to Harbin Builders and to Mr. Getty and his team for all the work, 'cause I know from June to December, that's time, which is money, but I very much appreciate, I think this will serve, um, a population that needs to be served. And while I certainly do not take any concern by surrounding neighbors lightly, I think in the long run, this will be a much better neighbor than what was originally proposed. And so, um, if there's not any other comment, I, I will move it.
And you're moving both, uh, the, uh, ordinance and the, uh, SUP?
Yes. Yes.
Put on them simultaneously?
Let's go separate.
Separate, okay. You move the ordinance first?
Sure.
All right, we have the ordinance.
Mr. Hippel?
Aye.
Ms. Larson?
Aye.
Ms. Sadler?
Aye.
Mr. McGlynn?
Aye.
Mr. Eisenhour?
Aye.
Now, you would like to move the SUP?
Oh, I'll, yes, I'll move that.
So, how about?
Ms. Sadler?
Aye.
Mr. McGlynn?
Aye.
Ms. Larson?
Aye.
Mr. Hippel?
Aye.
Mr. Eisenhour?
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay. All right, thank you. All right, that takes us to board requests and directives.
I'll start us off, since it's, um, this has been a long night, I'll save mine till the next one. We've had plenty of meetings with transportation, but most of you know it, and, um, rather than delay our night, I'm gonna pass on.
Sure.
Lord have mercy.
Thank you.
Saying I've just delivered.
I would just say that last week, we had our, uh, joint meeting with the schools, and I believe that you, you had mentioned earlier the elementary school, but I think we're, that's a conversation that we're gonna need to start having here at this dais. Uh, if, if we're in agreement with that, if we are, we need to probably start working on land. Uh, and I don't believe the school board has come to us with a spot where they're looking. So are they leaving that up to us, Mr. County Administrator?
We have had a group talking about sites, some of what we might already have access to, both, uh, within James City County and within the city of Williamsburg, and they have participated in those initial discussions. Uh, they don't have a site, but they have looked at us to see where growth is to help them in making next election, but would like to be part of that conversation.
Does the city have a parcel of spot that might work for a school?
They had a parcel that might, would, uh, be acceptable.
Okay, and, um, all right, well, we'll get in, but anyway, I just, I really, I, I, I think we need to start having that discussion. I would, I really hope that we are able to keep that discussion, uh, not to go down the same path the middle school discussion went. Rather you, uh, if you, if you don't agree with the, the need for the elementary school, but let's not keep asking for piles and piles and piles of paper and that kinda thing. Let's try to make a decision and, and move forward on that, once we feel that we have all the questions answered that we need to. Uh, just a reminder that we are in the process of hiring a, um, jail superintendent. We start those interviews in January. Um, I wanna say thank you to the Law Enforcement Center. They all, they, they, um, hosted us for the, uh, school meeting, and they will be hosting us as well for some of our interviews. And, um, I'll, I'll keep it to that. And, um, happy holidays, everybody.
Yes, Merry Christmas.
I just, I wanna take a brief moment to thank our law enforcement for being here tonight and, and always being there to, um, to serve everyone. Uh, law enforcement and our department, they're always spot-on and right there to look out for the well-being of everyone. Uh, thanks to staff for everything that you all do, and especially for the treats on long nights like tonight, because we're all up here munching. With that, Merry Christmas, and, um, be blessed, everyone.
I, just a couple of quick things. Um, wanted to mention, uh, that I attended the League of Women Voters Holiday Reception and, uh, enjoyed the opportunity to, uh, mingle with a number of our citizens at that event. Uh, also, I wanted to, uh, reiterate what Supervisor Larson had to say about schools, that, that we do have the need to comprehensively look at, uh, our space needs and come to some conclusions. I think, uh, Mr. Eisenhour did an excellent job moderating that, uh, that meeting with the city council and the schools, uh, and, uh, that it was a productive and useful meeting. Um, I also wanted to, uh, just, um, bring to the, uh, the attention of the board, uh, I've actually already done that, but, uh, to the public as well, um, the sad news of Edith Edwards passing. Um, Edith was married to Jack Edwards, who served on this board for thirty-some years, also served as the president of the Virginia Municipal League and the Virginia Association of County Officials. I think the only person who's ever held both of those positions, uh, uh, in, uh, the history of the organizations. Uh, Edith, uh, was his, his partner and, and friend for, uh, decades, uh, and they were among the first people I met in Williamsburg, mostly because he was the dean of the faculty at the time that I arrived as a, um, brand-new, even younger than I am now, faculty member. Uh, and they hosted all, this gives you an idea of this, of the sort of scale of the college at that time. Um, they hosted all of the new arts and sciences faculty at, uh, dinner and, um, a table tennis tournament in their home. Uh, I later discovered, uh, a couple of years later, at another event at, at their home, I discovered that Edith had a talent that I had never guessed before. She had rebuilt their fireplace in their home. Uh, but whether it was helping to establish Saint Martin's Church or, uh, to help found, uh, CDR, uh, Edith played a leading role in the community, often behind the scenes, but, uh, never shirking any responsibility or opportunity to serve, and, and she will be greatly missed. There will be a memorial service for her on January eleventh, I believe, at ten a.m. Uh, and let me also join in wishing all of my colleagues a very, uh, Merry Christmas, Happy Holidays, and wish all of our citizens, whatever you are celebrating in this season, uh, your, your faith tradition, your, um, cultural beliefs, that you have a wonderful time, uh, and take a little while to reflect on the joys that family and community bring to you.
Um, I, I will go back to the schools, uh, issue just very briefly. I think it is something we need to continue talking about, maybe at a, at a work session would be maybe an appropriate time. Uh, I think identifying, they wanna move the school up. I think there are two factors we need to consider. One is the availability of a proper site, because you can't really start putting money into design till you know what the property is. And then, secondly, um, the concept that we are going to look at not just the elementary school in isolation, but all of our elementary and pre-K, and, uh, we, we need to do a comprehensive approach to everything, I believe, so. Um, uh, we have a couple of events tomorrow. I'm gonna, I will be at the large staff meeting tomorrow with, uh, Mr. Stevens, and so will Hippel. So that's two of us, so we're legal. Uh, I would encourage you for, the next time we have it, we'll switch out and let some other board members go to it. I think you will find it very productive, very, very, uh, good, good event. Coming up on, uh, we also have our, uh, holiday luncheon on Thursday, I believe. Everybody signed up for that. January, a couple of things to think about. Uh, January sixth, our VACO VML Day, uh, and meeting our legislators. I believe we have, how many signed up for that, do you know?
Uh, three.
Several, sir.
Okay, at least three of us are signed up. So if it's three of us, we're gonna have to put it on our calendar, and it'll have to be a meeting, so we'll do that at the organizational meeting. Uh, I would like to see if we could maybe try to schedule to go see our legislators early in the day, uh, as opposed to trying to wait until after lunch, 'cause we sent, never seem to get them, uh, there. So we'll, we'll work on that. Um, the school has indicated that they would like to see if some of us could come up on January thirteenth for their legislative day from eight to eleven. Uh, I would suggest that we pick maybe no more than two, so we don't have to have a formal meeting, uh, and send a couple of folks. If you're interested in going up there to, uh, to do that, uh, that would be, be very helpful. Um, and then my Christmas plans are on the nineteenth. I get on an airplane to go to Brussels to spend Christmas with my two daughters and my grandchildren. Uh, so it's gonna be a, a little bit of a different Christmas for us this year, and, uh, Merry Christmas to everyone in the community. I hope you have a wonderful, wonderful holiday, and, and, uh, take care and be safe with your families. Okay. Thoughts to the county administrator?
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, just, uh, one item to share. I do wanna remind folks that, uh, we have kicked off the James City County Comprehensive Plan Update. Uh, we've named it Engage Twenty Forty-Five. Our kickoff event was recently held as a Summit on the Future. We had more than a hundred and eighty residents join us for the event. However, it's important that we continue to hear from as many community members as possible, and our questionnaire and visual survey, or our survey, is still available and open for comments until December, December eighteenth. Go to the county website if you, on search for Engage Twenty Forty-Five Survey, again, in search for Engage Twenty Four, Twenty Forty-Five Survey, you will see the questionnaire and visual preference survey. If you have questions, two five three six six eight five. Again, questions, two five three six six eight five. And I too would like to wish everybody a safe and happy holiday, and, um, I appreciate your time and effort over the year as well, so thank you.
I, I received so much positive feedback about the, in, the events for the Engage. Uh, I specifically had somebody that was at my event in, at Jamestown High School, who had attended Hampton's, and said it was all done at Hampton Coliseum, and felt like, oh, that it wasn't a true representation of the citizenry, because some people simply could not get there. And so by going out and meeting citizens where they were, that's just so important. You know, sometimes it takes a while to get things, you know, more people, I think more and more things that we do that way, if we're able to continue to do that, I think we'll get more and more participation, and I appreciate the fact that it's still open, and I've tried to get that word out.
Yes, ma'am, I appreciate the comments. I'm sure that was the intent of the team, to make it easy for our residents to participate, but I do appreciate that feedback, and we'll ensure they hear that as well, so thank you.
Thank you.
All right. With that, I will look for a motion to adjourn until four p.m. on January second, twenty twenty, for our organizational meeting.
All right, now that we end our year, this, um, year on, um, our last meeting, we'll, uh, make a motion for, um, let's see, they, they moved it on the thing, adjournment till four p.m. on January second, twenty twenty, for an organizational meeting.
Motion, Mr. Call the roll, please.
Mr. Hippel?
Aye.
Ms. Larson?
Aye.
Ms. Sadler?
Aye.
Mr. McGlynn?
Aye.
Mr. Eisenhour?
Aye.
All right. We are adjourned.[1793.53]